Good evening. We'd like to convene a special city council meeting for Tuesday, September 27, 2016. Would the clerk please call to order?
Councilmember Berman. Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Hilsap.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Walbach.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. So our one item tonight is interviews of candidates for the Planning and Transportation Commission. And each candidate will have 10 minutes. And our first candidate is Rebecca Eisenberg. Welcome.
Thank you.
The way we kick this off is you're welcome to take maybe up to a minute for opening remarks. And we encourage you not to take too much of your time for that so that we have plenty of time for dialogue. And then if we have time at the end, we can do a little wrap-up, but we may not necessarily have to. So, go ahead.
Thanks. My name is Rebecca Eisenberg. And I thank you for this opportunity to be considered to serve you and this community towards our mutual goals of helping keep our streets safe and our neighborhoods accessible and mobile for people of all ages. I'm an attorney with 20 years of experience, but I think more importantly, I'm a local mother with two children in our Palo Alto public schools. My daughter bikes up and down the new bike path on North California to Jordan and home. And my son bikes past the brand-new Cowper traffic circle as he makes his way to Walter Hayes Elementary School. I am a big stakeholder in the decisions made by the Planning and Transportation Committee as a parent of these children. And I personally drive. And when I drive, I want to make sure that the streets are safe for drivers, pedestrians, and bikers alike. I believe that my collaborative approach, my experience with negotiation, and my genuine concern for the well-being of others in our community would make me a unique asset to the commission. And I hope you'll place me on it. I'm ready for questions.
Great. Who would like to begin?
I'll start.
Please.
So, thank you very much for applying. That's really nice. It sounds like you're a busy woman as well.
We all are.
So, looking at this, unless I missed it, it doesn't look as though you have any essential planning background, but that you really tied it in with your own background as an attorney and member of the community.
Right.
So, why don't you argue a bit about that?
Thank you for that question. I'm not going to say that I'm the person with the most planning experience who's applying. That's for sure. But I can tell you that I'm as hard of a worker or harder than anybody who's applying, and that I'm really good at reading documents, and I do my homework. I'm also very good at math, and I don't mind diving deep into data. I also am a great listener. And I care about the opinions of the people in our community. I care about the seniors who live across the street. I care about my neighbors whose children attend school with me. And I believe that much of what we need to do is serve the current needs of our community. And someone who knows how to build a city from scratch, that's very valuable. I do think so. But I think what I have is I have kind of through my children and through being in touch with my neighbors, I work from home, I think I have kind of agents on the street reporting back to me and helping me understand what's going on in the community.
Thanks.
Would you like to go next? Tom?
So, in your comments, you said about the zoning code, you said that you read through the code related to controversial proposed residential projects. So, I wonder if you could tell us which project and how you interpreted the code and how you would have handled it if you were on PTC?
So again, I'm not an architect, although I'm pretty good at reading. First of all, I don't claim to be an expert on everything, but I do claim to listen to disparate opinions and think about them hard. One controversial project I was referring to, because it's, you know, in my mind, is the proposed house on Newell Street with 10 or 11 bedrooms. Now, that's a confusing proposal. And I can't tell you where I would come down in it because, to be honest, I'm confused by it.
Did you find somewhere in the zoning code that applied to it?
Well, you know, I've read that there doesn't seem to be currently a limitation. My understanding, you know, there, I couldn't find a limitation on number of bedrooms in a house as long as it serves a single family. Now, I have really good friends who have eight kids, a family of 10. And they travel internationally with these children. They spent the summer in East Asia. They have eight kids. They probably could use a 10-bedroom house. I, but then again, maybe that's not the purpose of this house. And it's right across the street from Walter Hayes School where my son attends. So, I think that the job of the Planning and Transportation Commission is to go into each and every one of these projects with an open mind and be receptive to the information given it. I think maybe this will turn out to be a problem, or maybe it won't. I don't know yet.
Kara?
So, two things. One, you do understand that if that house does not come to a planning commission, right?
Right. That was just why I read the zoning code.
So, you can answer whichever one of these you would like to. But in your commentary, you talk about, you know, many of the larger lots can accommodate multiple homes. Are you talking about R1 zoning, R2 zoning, multiple-family zoning? What are you talking about? And the other one that you can choose from is reconsidering the off-street parking requirements for housing.
Right. You ask hard questions, but I'm happy to tackle both.
One or the other.
One or the other. Okay. So, off-street parking. I think that's more low-hanging fruit for me, because the, although I do want to say zoning is what it is, and I don't propose getting rid of our zoning. So, but, off-street parking. I think that it can be a problem when people use the streets too much to park their cars, when they have availability in their garages and in their driveways. And by a problem, I mean that cyclists use the bike lanes. And again, I'm mostly thinking right now about Newell because it is an area where such controversy and I'm biased, it's close to where I live. I see valid reasons, in part because I hear my kids complain, that we wouldn't want a parking possibly allowed on Newell ever. Not just disallowed during the school hours. And that's because cyclists use that road during many hours, not just while kids are at school. And I think that having a dedicated, safe space for cyclists not only protects them, but protects drivers too. I don't, I say with certainty that none of us want to have to worry about cyclists coming out in front of our cars.
Can I ask you something? I read this to mean that you wanted to lessen the off-site your on-site parking requirements?
Well, that is, yeah. I mean, restricting, oh, yes. So, okay, sorry. I misunderstood your question. So, I think that there's some, some people believe, and I don't know if this is correct or not, some people believe that requiring parking spots to be, you know, requiring a lot of parking spots actually encourages car use. And I would say that to the extent we can enable alternatives to driving, to help mitigate our very real problems with congestion and parking that we have in Palo Alto, to the extent that we can enable alternatives, I think that a residence could conceivably be designed so that we wouldn't, each individual wouldn't need their own car. And that's where I think it's worth researching. You know, again, I'm not saying, I'm not putting my stick in the sand and saying this is how it always must be, but I think it's worth researching whether reducing that requirement while accompanied with actual means to travel in a way that doesn't involve cars, whether that could be possible.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you for that question.
Great.
In your comments, you also talk about enlarged lots accommodating multiple homes. So are you thinking of going into the R1 neighborhoods and rezoning for R2 or R3?
I don't think we need to rezone like that. I think that there, again, I would want to look at all the maps, but that something as drastic as that change, I think would be kind of an extreme measure. I believe in zoning. I think zoning has its, has its place and has its usefulness. I mean, as a reminder, I, I have kids, you know, and they bike to and from school every day. And I, not to be nimbly, but I believe, I wouldn't really want a multi-use, multi-residential building put up at the corner of Nevada and Waverly, where I live. I, you know...
So what was that comment directed to in here? I was unclear on that.
So, for example, there have been some, I haven't researched this particular project, but I've been impressed by it. Near me on Seal, in between Alma and Emerson, is a really very big lot that either was subdivided or was always that way. And now there's four units that are being offered for rent. I think a lot of them are still available.
On which street?
It's on Seal. S-E-A-L-E. Yeah, in Old Palo Alto, just, just...
By Alma?
Yeah. Just west of, no, but it's on Seal. Yeah, between Alma, it actually, it might be actually between Emerson and Bryant. But it's definitely between Alma and Bryant because that's where I, it's on my running path. And they have four units there. But it's a very large lot. I, and so four, it can accommodate four families who all could potentially send kids to Walter Hayes, with mine, and to Jordan and Pally. It's a great location. It's ideal. So, I'm not talking about putting apartment buildings in the middle of Old Palo Alto. More exploring, you know, if it makes sense to a community in a neighborhood while listening to the residents' point of view, to the neighbors. Neighbors have a stake in their neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think that wraps up our time. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think that's talking about pre-existing cottage cluster.
No, I know which one you mean. Yeah. Because I live on Seal.
Oh, you do?
I do. Sounds like Seal.
Yeah. I used to live on Seal too, for years, to get the house that's now under house.
I live between Cowper and Waverly.
Oh. I lived on Cowper, of, of Seal and Waverly.
Okay.
And now I'm on Waverly and Nevada.
Thank you a lot.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Claude.
Hey, Claude.
So, you probably know our routine, which is we welcome folks to, it's maybe up to a minute for opening remark. And then we'll have, the whole interview period is 10 minutes. And we'll have questions. And at the end, if there's time, you can have a wrap-up, but there may not be time.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
So, let me start by highlighting some of my priorities. One of them would be to improve public transportation. I'm thinking, for instance, about the shuttle and see if we could expand a bit the program. When I was on the Human Relations Commission, some of you might remember, that we did a very comprehensive study of social needs in Palo Alto. And one thing that came very loud and clear was the need for public transportation for seniors. And I think that would be benefit from an expanded shuttle program, for instance, to go to Avenida. I like also to see better connections between the different modes of transportation. I'm thinking, for instance, that we could have better coordination of the time, maybe better connections between the shuttle and Marguerite from Stanford, VTA, Caltrain. Ultimately, you know, I would envision, and it might be original effort, but you know, some kind of smartphone application that would take you from walking from your house to the bike share program, to the VTA, or Caltrain, or Stanford-Marguerite, so that you can navigate the Bay Area and optimize your time commuting and not take your car, which is very important. I'm glad to see that we are going to expand the bike share program. And if on the commission, I would definitely want to monitor that and make sure it ultimately becomes a successful program, because, you know, many cities have been doing that, you know, I see it in many places. And it has to be successful in Palo Alto. It's important as part of reducing traffic, encouraging more people to bike. And that could be the last mile solution. Another priority would be affordable housing, you know, if you have to pick in terms of housing. If there was a way to get some of the teachers in a school district or city employees closer to where they work, I think that would be a great benefit.
Thank you. So who would like to go first on questions? Greg?
So, Claude, in your statement here, you talk about, you view the world as there's residentialists who advocate for the preservation of the character of our neighborhoods, of a slow, tightly conrolled, and other sites, another group of people that want a bunch of housing, especially affordable housing, and you want to play the peacemaker.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, what would you do?
Yeah, let me expand on that. Clearly, you know, I, when I listen to both groups, you know, I'm not affiliated with any one of them, but I see and hear many very valid concerns on both sides. And I think there's not always an opposition between the two groups on everything, you know. And there might be a way to find some common grounds. For instance, I don't think anybody is opposed to preserving the character of our neighborhood, you know. And I don't think anybody wants to increase traffic. So, I think that my role would be to try to be a bit of a bridge between the different opinions and try to form a consensus, maybe according some modification to some projects, give and take, you know, so that maybe projects like Maybell, for instance, which failed, which had many positive aspects, but some negative one, maybe, and I know, Greg, you know, you tried to be the peacemaker there, and tried to bridge the gap between the different point of views. I think there might be a way to work on different projects and find some, some common grounds and by taking out what nobody likes.
Tom?
Thanks for applying. So what would you do about parking in Palo Alto?
So, one of the things I'm a big proponent of, and I think the city, I think I read, might be working on it, is to put signs, street signs that indicate a number of parking spaces available for different parking garages. You know, I'm a big believer in using your assets, you know, before you think about building other expensive parking garages, you know, make sure, let's make sure that they are full. So, I don't know the latest situation there, but from what I read a while back, you know, they were not full most of the time. So this would be certainly a way to, to help by directing people to the available spaces. And it would minimize, by the way, traffic where people don't turn around Palo Alto for 10, 15 minutes trying to find a parking space. And it's also bad for the environment. I think the, I'm also a proponent of residential parking programs. We need to monitor, monitor that. Work very closely with the different community groups that have been doing some very good work and providing very good inputs to the city council and the commission.
Okay. Greg Schmidt?
You've mentioned residents, parking, and new housing. You haven't said anything about commercial office space. How does that fit in the equation?
So, yeah, I couldn't talk about everything, but you know, clearly, it's also a concern of mine. I know about this imbalance we have of 3:2:1 ratio, you know, between employees in Palo Alto and residents. It's one of the highest, I believe, in the nation. So, I'm in favor of limit, limiting office growth. I think if I have to pick, you know, I'd rather see some housing as opposed to more office space. I think, you know, that would, and especially affordable housing. If we continue to have more, more of this imbalance, there will be more traffic, more traffic, more parking problems, it will make things even worse. So, I think I'm in favor of having like a yearly cap. You cannot say no office at all, no, but, and we have to be careful not to kill the golden egg goose, you know. Property prices and, you know, the health of Silicon Valley depend on jobs. And you don't want to turn people off for the whole region, so that it turn away entirely. But I would definitely be in favor of office caps.
Liz?
Looking at a couple of things that you have read here. I'm a big fan of transportation demand management. And you know that we are, we have begun our own association here. Say a little more about it.
Yeah, no, I was following a bit what Stanford did, you know. And I have some friends who work at Stanford, and they, they have been very successful. And I'd like Palo Alto to be successful with that. You know, they, they did, it's probably easier for them because many of these people are their employees. So, they can give them incentives, you know, money. And Stanford has a lot of means too, that maybe, you know, it doesn't have. But you know, there are probably some, some good things to take from, to learn from that program. And I know it's been, it's not used only by Stanford, you know. There are many cities that do that as well. I think it's a long-term effort. And some of the things I mentioned are like smart apps that make it easier to, to use public transportation, better connections. That's part of that as well.
Thanks.
Eric?
So you touched on, you mentioned housing before. So, obviously, one of the most challenging things the city grapples with is the cost of housing around here, as it is in the whole region. Suppose, for the sake of argument, that housing demand was so high that no amount, no practical amount of new housing would bring the price down to be affordable. How should the council and its commissions approach policy in such an environment?
Well, first, no, I think it's not even a supposition. I think there is insatiable demand for housing. There is no end in sight. And unless there is a huge recession, I don't think that housing prices will come down or collapse. So, it's why, you know, if I had to focus, I focus on affordable housing, but know how to do it. I think it might be, you know, when you give some development rights to, to a developer to build some new housing, you ask that they, below market rate, BMR units as part of it. Maybe we, I think the ratio might be sometimes like 15 percent. Maybe we increase that to 20, 25 percent. So, that might be a way to, to do that. You know, I don't think we are going to solve the problem even for affordable housing. But you know, we, I think we have a duty to at least do what we can.
Okay. Kara?
If you were going to see a headline in the newspaper five years from now, what would your most anticipated, looked forward to headline be?
I would love to see Palo Alto...
Unpeached.
No. He's not going to get there to impeach.
I'd love to see Palo Alto shown as a great example for biking. Where we talk about the success of bike share program, about all the good things we're doing now.
This is a headline.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, a headline.
Well, it would be especially, Palo Alto is a great example to follow for biking, for a bikeable city.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Do I have time to make a quick statement?
No, sorry.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Claude.
All right. Just getting started.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Are you in?
My bigger briefcase here for my 75th Parks and Recreation meeting coming up after this.
All right. So you probably know the routine, which is that we have about 10 minutes. And you're welcome to take a minute or so for an introduction. And if we have any extra time at the end, you can use it for wrap-up, but we haven't generally been having that time.
Okay. Yeah, Kim said that it'd be about a minute before and a minute after, but we'll adjust to that. So, well, as you all know, I've spent seven years on the Parks and Recreation Commission, where I've, I think, together, we posted a lot of accomplishments in those seven years. And I've developed a very intimate understanding of Palo Alto city government. When, in the last five years, three of them I've been chair and one of them I've been vice chair. And I appreciate that because it's a, an endorsement by my peers of both my, I think, my work ethic and, and my leadership. With staff, I've been tactful but direct to keep moving projects along. And it's been very cooperative. And I have very good relationships there. So, I think my experience matters a lot for PTC. You guys obviously know how important that is. But I think that the council and the community, not to mention the commission, will benefit from folks that have prior government experience and a knowledge of how the process works. In my tenure on Park, we worked on a lot of things that were right up the PTC alley, including land use and parking and safe corridors. Looking at what they need on PTC from my perspective is, you know, you need a lot of detailed debate on tough issues there, but that has to lead to balanced recommendations to council. That's my style. That's how I work. So I'd focus on bridging any gaps that were there, but ultimately creating solutions that result in, you know, an ongoing trust between what's going on in PTC and the council. I do my homework and I get a lot of stuff done. You're a witness.
Great.
Ed? Ed sent me a nice email today. Thank you. Unpaged, well, this is three of five, but it's number two. You focused on one of our favorite intersections, which is, as you've said, on Buckdaro and El Camino and so forth. We recently did a big bike change, which you probably are aware of. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
You did a bike change, did you say?
We did, in fact, a bike, what was it called? A Dutch?
Dutch door?
A Dutch intersection. A Dutch, it's a Dutch something. But it changes the safety for bikes, and it changes the routing, and better for kids, and so forth. So, looking at this, do you think that will improve things? Because you've also discussed lessons learned, lessons learned, and so forth. So, comment on that, both from the new bike arrangement, as well as what else would you do with that intersection that's such a challenge?
Well, part of what I was saying there was I would want to do study of what had happened and what was recommended. Didn't know that by the time we got here, a few days prior to that, you would have all voted on that. But I think it's important to look at lessons learned as a, as a template for what you do next. And I wasn't completely in the loop of what was going to happen. I did follow that council meeting, most of it, on, on television. And obviously, there was fair debate on both sides of that issue, even after a unanimous recommendation from PTC. So, it was, it was, it was a tough call. And as I understand the difference, this might be simplifying, but you know, more bike safety versus more traffic, elimination of traffic congestion. So, I don't think I can comment particularly on the Dutch door, but I can comment on the fact that there has now been action taken, which is going to improve the situation there, particularly for bike, bike safety, which hopefully will also have the concomitant success of helping the traffic along, just because there's not people looking for, for bikes.
Good. Thanks.
Greg Schmidt?
Had some great experience on Parks and Rec, where you've been dealing with, how do you provide services for the residents and people in town? The PTC is dealing, in a way, with a different context of three commuters to every employed resident, and traffic and parking. How do you think about changing your, the context of your thinking, moving from Parks and Rec to PTC?
Because of the, what was that stat that you quoted there?
The number of commuters that are coming to town, which is probably the highest in the country.
Yeah. Because of the, what was that stat that you quoted there?
The number of commuters that are coming to town, which is probably--
Oh, I see.
--the highest in the country.
Yeah.
So your context of decision-making is dramatically different.
Yeah, we're estimating for the master plan that about 60,000 people come to Palo Alto to go to work. All of those don't go into parks, but they all come here to go to work. So I think that makes it a much, much more complex problem. And I'm of the opinion, I think I mentioned in my application, that, you know, I'm not sure we have a parking problem, we have a too many cars problem. And there are ways that are already being worked on in the new comprehensive plan and, by you folks, to address, to address those issues. There, during the day, kind of citizens too, I think is how I would answer that philosophically, and they have to be accommodated. So we can't change that. We want to accommodate them as citizens and shoppers and restaurant goers. But it is a broader context, and it is different than the impact of those same people on parks.
Well, thanks for applying. So could you expand on that? You mentioned parking, so what do you think we should do about parking, kind of beyond things you already mentioned?
Yeah, again, I'm aware that there's a number of things that are in the loop. I really like this mobility as a service. So the parking is an issue, but you can obviate some of that by just not bringing more cars down there to park. So if there's a little shuttle that I can catch at my house, instead of go to what I call my second office down here at Ilford Isle, then I'd never get in my car. I once went to Park City and rented a car to go skiing by myself, and I never moved the car until I drove back to the airport, because they had one of those, and I thought, this is phenomenal, anywhere I wanted to go. So that type of solution, I think, is better than putting up garages underground or above ground. That said, we can't ignore that, and we want to be looking for ways to encourage people to stay downtown less, or to not come down there much at all. Metered parking, as opposed to free parking, that has implications for folks that are, you know, not as affluent, but it's another way to just point out that you don't have to be down here and park your car along the sidewalk.
Have you, as a member of the comp plan, CAC, that has given you a different set of perspectives than perhaps you had in your years on the Parks and Rec Commission? Can you just share what that, that process has meant to you in terms of your understanding and outlook toward--
The CAC?
Yeah.
I'm actually not on--
But you're not on CAC, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I was mistaken.
But I've read the new comp plan, and I'm very encouraged by what I see there.
Let me then ask a different question. What are your thoughts about the role of, in this case, the Planning Commission and its relationship to the council? We've had issues the last couple of years around Planning Commission that had a different set of outlooks on policy in a number of areas, and, which is fine, but then the question is, how should that function as an advisory body to the council?
Should PTC, or with respect to this--
PTC.
To the CAC?
I'm sorry, PTC.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm surprised that they're not more involved in the, in the CAC process, but I presume that that was by design at this point. I think that they should be pacing those policy issues and basically using that as a template for the decisions that need to be made. You know, the new comp plan should be the guideline for the city, which is the point of investing the amount of hours and brainpower in it. So that should be the guideline to, to make decisions for council recommendations.
Karen?
So I'll give you your choice here. You've been involved in a lot of master plans. Parks Master Plan, Urban Forest Master Plan, now El Camino Park, which is in itself sort of a master plan.
It was.
And EIR is associated with, with at least a couple of those projects. So do you want to talk a little bit about that and how that prepares you for being a Planning and Transportation Commissioner, or you could also talk about office caps and ground floor retail protections? Pick your pick.
Well, I could talk about all of them, but I don't have--
Yeah, take your pick.
--the time. So taking the first one, I think that the two things that are there is that those master plan issues are very long-term, and that's different, and very comprehensive, taking into account, you know, lots of things. Again, even though Camino Park had EIR issues, the golf course had a 500-page EIR to deal with. So the comprehensiveness of some of those big projects is different than just, should we put sandboxes in this park or not? And I think that there's a kind of a strategic aspect to that that is important relative to its application to the, to the tough and very complex integrated issues that PTC is dealing with, you know, twice a month, and more.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, well, that wraps up our time. Thank you.
It goes quickly.
It does go quickly.
This is why we need 15 minutes, guys.
All that preparation for 10 minutes.
That's right.
Yes.
My second speech, I can't even give.
You can email it to us.
Okay. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liz?
Tom, you've gone without being identified now.
That's who you are.
Yeah. No one's going to know you.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So the way the process works is we have about 10 minutes, and you're welcome to use the first minute or so for opening remarks. If we have any extra time at the end, you're welcome to have a wrap-up, but we may not have that time, so go ahead and kick off.
All right. So my name's Brian Hammacheck, and I've been here pretty much my entire life, 31 years actually, to the day, because today's my birthday, and I was born in Stanford Hospital.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I went to, I went to Walter Hayes, and then Jordan Middle School, and then Palli. Some, I met my wife at Fistleberry Preschool in Palo Alto. So I'm pretty much Palo Alto through and through, I love the town.
Hell reason.
And some of you might remember that I actually applied two years ago, and so I've been through the process once before, and I lost by one vote that time. I don't hold any resentment, though, don't worry. But, yeah, so that's, that's just about me.
Great. Who would like to go first?
Tom?
Thanks for applying.
Again, so what do you think we should do about parking in Palo Alto?
Well, I think that, I think long-term, parking might not be so much of an issue because of some of the technology that's coming down the pipeline. So I guess my stance would be, I might not be quite as concerned about it long-term as some people are. But short-term, obviously, there needs to be a solution. I think technology can actually play a big role in that, too. There's ways that you can, you know, do the, the parking app so that it tells you where spots available, kind of prioritizing, or just making it easier to find a place that you can park, to maximize, you know, the usage of all the available spots. If that kind of, does that answer your question at all, or?
Yeah, if you have any other ones, any other ideas?
No, I mean, I think that those are the kind of things that come to my mind. In general, I mean, I'm definitely a technologist and an optimist, so I definitely always think that there's technology that can help solve things, but--
Okay, Liz?
Hi, Brian. Looking, it's interesting, because the previous applicant had the same kind of question. Apparently, the corner of El Camino and in Bacodaro is a hotspot. So you've, the last person commented, and you've said you're very interested in that. Give us any feedback on that that you want to, and we did recently make a change in the bike route there, which you may know about.
Yeah, definitely. I guess it's not so much that corner, but actually down the corridor, more at Alma and that underpass. That's where I have really strong kind of feelings, because that's a, kind of a way that I used to walk from, I grew up on Lowell Avenue, and then I'd walk to downtown, and I know, like firsthand, how as a pedestrian, navigating that, that part of Bacodaro can be really tricky, because there really isn't any safe way to do it. You just kind of have to wait for traffic and run, which isn't really a very acceptable way. So that's kind of where I was talking about in my application, my strong feelings come from.
That's slightly different, right?
Yeah. And then, but in terms of that whole, that whole project that's going on there, the Embarked Arrow Project, it's actually, what first got me involved in this commission was that I had emailed the city council about the new Trader Joe's and how that, and the new stoplight that was coming in there. And so that's what actually first got me, and I got such great responses back from the city council about, you know, the reasoning behind it. And then I realized, wow, there's a lot more that goes into these things. And that's actually when I started to follow a lot of the planning things that are going on here, but--
Thanks.
Cora?
Thank you for your application. You mentioned in your answer to question three, you say that you'd like to see the commission continue to preserve the unique character of Palo Alto. What quality or qualities do you think make for the unique character of Palo Alto?
Yeah, I mean--
What does that mean to you?
I mean, there's so many things that that means to me.
Well, specifically, as it relates to the purview of the PTC?
Okay. I guess a lot of it has to do with the types of buildings and projects that are going to get accepted. I think it's a shame that places like Keable and Shuckett are leaving, that Joe's has left, that a lot of places are closing up shop, obviously. And I think that that's, you know, an example of losing that unique character, because it was those kind of places that really kind of made Palo Alto special to me growing up. So doing things that can prevent further erosion of those kind of places, I guess, if that answers your question.
Are you?
Who's next?
Sure. So following on that, are you familiar with the ordinance that the council passed last year to protect ground floor retail citywide? So, and we also put in an annual office cap. Tell us your perspective on either or both of those.
Um, I guess I, I think that that's a good measure. I'm specifically talking because I'm more familiar with the office cap. And I personally think that that's, you know, probably a smart thing to implement, at least short-term, while we try to figure things out more.
Okay, thank you.
What are your thoughts about some of the directions that the new comprehensive plan is considering, or how familiar are you with them? And do you have any thoughts about how we should change?
I guess, I guess maybe you could give me an example of one of the new things, because I, I'm not sure if I'm familiar enough to be able to answer that very well.
Well, one, I guess two of the biggest aspects are transportation and housing. On transportation, do you have kind of a vision of where we ought to be going?
I mean, yeah, I definitely think that we need to be planning more with transportation in mind, making sure that there's going to be bike corridors and things along those lines, making sure that it's easy access. I think overall, the city's done a fairly good job. I mean, I've lived here, actually, without having a car for probably a good year, and I was actually able to, I was surprised by how easy it was to get around. There's the free shuttle, there's a lot of different ways that you can get around this town. So in some regards, I think that it's already being factored in, and just to expand those existing programs would be good.
Great. Liz?
Eric?
Okay, I'll try and, so you've been here a long time.
Yeah.
And obviously, as you know, the cost of housing around here is, you know, one of the most severe challenges that we have in town, right, and again, up and down the peninsula. Suppose for the sake of argument, that demand was so insatiable that no practical amount we could build would actually impact prices and make it more affordable. How should the council and council commissions like the PTC, how should we approach policy in that kind of an environment?
I mean, I definitely can talk to this, because I'm actually looking to buy my own house here, right as we speak. I'm in the process of it. So I definitely am very familiar with the prices around here. And I think for the most part, my philosophy would be that the council shouldn't get overly involved in that process, but obviously, there's certain characteristics of the city that we want to preserve. And if it's that kind of an environment, then the city council might have to get involved and set aside, you know, special housing for maybe for first responders and things along those lines in the city. But in general, I'm of the notion that it's not so much the purview of the city council, to an extent. I mean--
Great.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Good.
Do you have any wrap-up comments you'd like to make?
No, I guess I took a look at all the people that are applying this time around, and I'm sure that you guys were equally impressed by the quality of these applicants. So I feel really strongly, obviously, I want you guys to vote for me, but I feel really strongly that we're going to have some good people added to this commission. So I'm happy with all the response that this has gained.
One more minute, let me ask a question. Sorry, I should have earlier. Do you have any thoughts on kind of the role and the relationship of the PTC as it relates to advising the city council?
In what regard, I guess?
Well, we've had the last couple of years where a good portion of PTC had different outlooks on policy from the council, and the question has been on, when that occurs, what's the most appropriate way for the commission to function and serve the council?
I guess the way that I see it is, you know, this commission isn't an elected commission, so it's not really the residents that are, you know, picking who's on the commission, it's the council. So really, I would see that this commission is really kind of serving the council in a way, more so than serving the residents, if that makes sense, in that it should be helping make your job easier to make your decisions, giving you the information you need, less so than it is about us necessarily interjecting our opinions if they're completely, you know, contradictory to the council, since that's not really, we haven't been voted in by the, you know, the residents to have our opinions be heard necessarily. I mean, obviously, you want to hear both sides of the stories, but we're there to kind of support the council, I feel like, right?
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thanks for offering to serve.
Yeah.
Especially since you've mentioned there are 16.
We have a 20-minute gap?
We're behind, I guess.
Oh, that's interesting.
Is that because--
Like every hour, we had a 10-minute gap.
Oh. But--
He's here.
People here. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
David, we have up to 10 minutes for candidates, and you're welcome to take the first minute or so for opening remarks, and if we have time at the end, you can do a wrap-up. We may or may not have time at the end.
Okay, I hear you haven't yet.
We actually did just the last time.
Oh, good, okay. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity. Can you all hear me? Yeah, good, thanks. I've been an architect, a planner, an urban designer, a developer for 50 years. These overlapping professions share several skills: understanding regulations, defining program, knowing the cost of construction, being aware of larger contexts, remaining sensitive to the social implications and the neighborhood concerns, and finally, recognizing and supporting the creative image. I firmly believe that these are the essential qualities for membership of this committee. Since becoming a resident here in Crescent Park, I have actively immersed myself in this community, exploring all of the neighborhoods from San Francisco, Quito Creek, down to San Antonio. These important skills to understand the underlying planning and transportation issues are what I have used to understand this community here. I've attended ARB meetings, I've attended HRB meetings, and reviewed PTC records of meetings focusing on housing and the commercial. I am prepared to join with the other PTC members and make useful comments to help you guide Palo Alto.
Great, thank you. Who would like to kick off? Greg?
I enjoyed your little descriptions of Brooklyn.
Oh.
Reminded me of Jane Jacobs--
Uh-huh.
--who talked about--
Yes.
--dealing with development.
Yes.
If Jane Jacobs would appear in Palo Alto today, what do you think she would focus on?
Good question.
Very, very good question.
I want to hear the answer.
Oh, well, she's a very urban person.
Oh, well, she's a very urban person. She was very interested in what happened in Greenwich Village around her immediate neighborhood. And it was a low-rise neighborhood, but it was a five-story, probably, neighborhood, you know, four or five-story. And it was filled with a great variety of people, a variety of occupations. And her, her attitude, which affected housing policy in New York City significantly, got us to build some very significant low-rise housing in the west side of the village that is still very successful today. Walk-up housing, low-scale housing, closer relationship to the street. But if I could segue a little bit on that, I lived and have lived since 1970 in Brooklyn, in an area called Park Slope. And I think Jane Jacobs would have loved that community, too, but I don't think she came to Brooklyn. It's a low-rise, four-story, brownstone community. I'm often intrigued by it relative to Palo Alto, because we have 64,000 people in two square miles, whereas Palo Alto has about 26 square miles, all told, and the same population. And so therefore, I talked about that, my years of experience from buying a house in Brooklyn until now, when I'm here in this community. So I don't know if that answers your question exactly, but the spirit of it, perhaps?
Greg? So in your application, you talked about the microhousing units that you're building, and about the microhousing development projects suggested for the ETA lot.
Yeah.
What if you could give us your thoughts on that, and also your thoughts a little bit on why you want to be on the planning commission?
Okay. The first one, it's pretty much, as I stated in my application, the kind of units that we've been building in the office, urban architectural initiatives in New York, and...
Well, I wanted you to talk about it in Palo Alto.
Yes, of course, of course. So I, I think there's a place for, obviously, a place for these kind of units. I have a bit of a caution about them, only on a business sense. Is the developer hoping that those will be units that will be used for a few years? Is there a rent increase that happens? Is there a future possibility that a developer would, you know, be looking for profits at the end of the picture? I think that that size unit, you know, actually, let me just, for a minute, go back to New York. We built those units in New York this past year. Mayor Bloomberg commissioned a building like that that had very small units, one-person units, efficient kitchens, and some community space in the same building on the east side, 27th Street. And they were prefabbed, by the way, as well, you know, so they brought in the boxes and placed them one on top of another. Very interesting project. And I think it's useful in this community to have spaces like that for individuals who can have a certain time of their life when they will need that kind of sized unit. So I, I would suggest that I would have voted for your considering that project.
Thank you.
Now, there was a second part to the question, yeah. Why am I, why am I, why am I... Well, in the first place, I want to repeat, I think I'm very qualified. I think my experience is specific to the needs of this committee, and specific to your needs to get some help from this committee in kind of filtering what comes through to you in the right way. So I, again, refer to my experience as an architect, because that's the kind of experience I think that will be helpful.
Thank you. Liz?
So I'm gonna go back to Jane Jacobs. I always like...
Okay.
That's one of my favorite things to study. So, and the question from Greg, I think, was if, and I think she'd be 100 years old today, as I recall, if you, if she were to look around the city, because I heard your feedback on it, but let's say she looks at the city, what would she say is missing? Because she had a definitive message in most of her, most of her work.
Yes, I, I think a certain amount of the New York culture is missing here. There's an intensity, there's the street life, there's the safety issues of the street, you know, the, all of those things that she talked about, right? But I thank you for asking the question, because, you know, I also have some differences with, with what she was looking at, you know, and I think that some today would find it a little bit out of, out of scale with what, what our sort of present-day planning principles.
Too dense, perhaps?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, because obviously, it's very less dense here, okay? And so, and we have beautiful streets in Palo Alto. I think I've been on 20% of them in the last few, few days, you know. And they're gorgeous streets, there's a very quiet life here, there's a peacefulness here. There isn't that feeling in a New York City. And in fact, you know, to be very candid with you, and I'm sure a lot of other senior people feel the same way, it's really kind of more pleasant to be here than in the middle of an urban, a dense urban area.
Thanks. That was the answer I was...
Okay.
So I want to follow up on Liz's question. Earlier on, you'd spoken about the density in Brooklyn compared to here, although we have half of our land space or more, more actually, as open space, so...
Yes, you do. Beautiful open space.
But you elected to move here and live in a very nice, kind of almost rural area.
Yes, yes.
So what are your thoughts about, between that personal choice and kind of this societal vision of what sort of density we ought to be having here?
Okay, that's a good one. First place, my daughter and son-in-law and four grandchildren are here. So the draw was just much too great. I couldn't pass that up. Secondly, I've been to foothills, I've spent a fair amount of time in, at the bay, you know, looking out at the birds, and, and the wonderful scenery around it. And it's a great, great environment, those two pools. I would, let me get the second part of that, your question then, first.
Well, just a reconciliation.
Reconciliation, okay.
Societal values and personal choices.
Okay, okay. You know, I'm, I'm actually choosing, I'm a kind of an active brain, and I, so my interest is actually, and I'm so glad for those first two questions, because I've been really reading Jane Jacobs again, and reading up on some early planning that happened, some of it in New York and then elsewhere. Sunnyside, the area where there was a different kind of garden development, you know. And I find that those kind of urban development issues are something that I would like to keep on researching. And I did a project in Brooklyn, a dense project, in Rockaway, a result of the Sandy's storm. And it was a competition, which I didn't win, but nonetheless, I feel pretty strong about that. So I'd like to keep, I'd like to be here in the quietness of this place and the sun every day, sit on my deck and actually read books and study planning a little bit more. So I like the feel. And I think, though, that, and by the way, we have University Avenue here, which is a different kind of a buzz, which I stated in my feeling. I think it's a great, a great commercial area. So one of the, one of the areas I'm most concerned about is, is California Avenue. It's really missing it. You know, they're trying so hard to make something happen with the glass and the, and the concrete, and the way they've done the paving all around, you know, and the parking, et cetera. But I think California needs a lot of work still. So to the extent that a planning background and architectural background can help you guys figure out how to, how to improve California Avenue, that's a nice scale urban problem to try to solve.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
That's it?
That, more than...
Can I sum up?
We ran out a couple of minutes ago.
Oh, we ran out.
We ran over.
Oh, okay.
You can send it to us if you want to.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So Tom asks if we could take a break. Shall we go ahead and take a few minutes?
I'll take a break.
Let's take about 10 minutes.
I'll just note here, by the way, Jane Jacobs, when she got mad at New York, she became a Torontonian. We're experts, right? But you call it experts. Yes, Jane Jacobs got the Order of Canada at some point or other, right?
Did she?
She did.
Yeah.
Did you ever hear the story about how Canada got its name?
No, I didn't get its name, actually. I don't want to hear this again.
C-A-N-A. It's a bad joke. I'm only repeating it, I didn't make it up.
Okay. Well, this is one of those nights when I've actually...
We're taking a little bit of a...
Hi. It's not, it's, it's not about you.
I want to ask the next, I should ask Frank, yeah.
You have a lot of stamina, because you're 16 candidates.
Yeah. Well, they got, they got restless.
Well, you know.
They got restless.
I want to be useful somewhere.
Yeah.
Move them in, move them out.
Right. So I guess I ought to go take my break, right?
I guess, darn it.
The 209 number makes me nervous.
This is what I would call Indian summer. I don't know if they call it Indian.
It is Indian summer, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't know whether that's a, you know, Stanford's event, and the Indians are mascots, I don't know whether there's an Indian summer anymore.
Well, I grew up in, in Wayland, there's an Indian summer. There are, it's still Indians there.
This is what...
And they are called Indians. There's absolutely no question.
Well, they are, you know, we're the, we're the undocumented.
Right, yes. No, we still have a tribe in the next, in the next city, well, it's not a city, I mean, rather just too rural to call it a city. But they're the Wakan Ox, and they're a well-known tribe. They have taken a lot of land back from the white man, and especially in Martha's Vineyard, they've taken back an entire, really, point that exists there.
It changes the name.
Yeah.
My wife is a Maui girl, born and brought up, third generation.
Oh, another, another island, sort of.
And she's a captain by that time. The Hawaiian, the native Hawaiian people have just been given tribal status by the federal government for 120 years.
Wow.
What does that mean?
Well, it means we're gonna be entitled to some land and some control. And there are laws and there are courts, you know, for their own land. So it's like an Indian tribe here, you know.
The hardest part on where I'm from, hardly, is the addition of the casinos as the result of...
You can expect that, as the best moneymaker there is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And also, you know, it's kind of detrimental to the tribe longevity at the same time.
I went through the Navajo lands at one point, and at the Chaco Canyon, there were at least a half a dozen private airplanes parked there. There were a lot of rich people, but there were desperate poverty also.
Yes, desperate, yeah.
So it's not getting cheered around.
Yeah, no, I visited some of that when we went up to New Mexico. So I, I remember the other side of it, which was so sad.
Yeah, the interesting part of what's with that is that the hotter it gets in Central Valley, cool, it's hit. It has the, you know, it's rusty, the rain's just, you know, it runs into the sea, so it gets stagnant, and it's really hot, the prices. So the breeze has increased in many states, and the rain is falling, so as soon as the cool is off in the valley, it then warms up.
That's interesting. I mean, this, the weather's been terrific this year. Long cool, spring, enough rain to keep the flats happy. And then, oh, summer that was mostly really hot, one or two times.
I'm waiting for that first train.
No, I'm waiting to, I'm waiting to go out and get wet.
Where are you from, Frank?
I've been here 35 years, but my wife's from Hawaii. We grew up on the east coast. I was teaching at the University of Virginia before we came here. And so it's a very beautiful school and location.
Did you meet your wife in California?
No, I met her in Hawaii, actually. I'm a postdoc there.
Okay, oh, good.
But it's...
For the great place, for the...
I was gonna say, the funnier, well, it's even funnier than you think, because I was studying scuba diver physiology.
I hope you had a scuba diver...
Your federal money at work.
Yourself, do you go scuba diving?
I used to, not anymore. I like warm water, and we don't have a lot of that around here.
That's right.
Even with the wet, so it's pretty cold here.
I grew up in San Francisco, it was 10, it was 12, 7, 13. Hey, in California, in summertime, you should go to beach. So we went to the beach every day, put on a towel and get ready, and after afternoon, ran into the waters, swimming, everything, back way down. And after a week of it, I turned and said, you know, we haven't seen the sun, that water's freezing. I don't think this is what they meant by California.
No, that's right. I have to tell the story that my wife, I think the weather's about as good as you can find in the world, but my wife says, this is nothing to worry about, nothing like the weather.
Well, I always figured San Diego, I think it's colder, but maybe Ohio.
You can't get on in San Diego, and if the global warming really, unbelievably happening, if it does, this'll be San Diego. And it'd be too hot in the Southern California, the girlie, anything anymore.
All right, Frank, I heard an accusation that you're an RF power supply guy.
I am, yeah, actually. Magnetic power design, are you involved in that, or have you been?
Just on the periphery.
Well, I'm a, I'm radio amateur, but I don't really enjoy talking to people. It's just that radio RF design was a good part of what I did in medical design.
That's what I meant, from the medical side.
Yeah. Doppler ultrasound was really my personal specialty. Doppler ultrasound was one of my first specialities. And this is the place to be, by the way. California's, you know, within, how do they say it, something like 25 miles of Hoover Towers, where a third of the, of the medical device applications come. So this is, you know, the hunt, it's either here or Minneapolis, which has...
No period of time is that?
Well, I think it's for a year, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe great.
They're still really active.
I mean, is that historically true?
No, no, I mean, I think year by year. It's, this is one of the hotbeds of development. The hotbeds are really here in maybe Orange County and Minneapolis, mostly. I mean, my wife would never, she's got a new husband, I'm worried. So it's a 35-year, and there's something to go back to, I don't know.
All right, I think we just about have everybody. So when we get going, the routine is, we have 10 minutes, and you're welcome to kick off with an opening remark for a minute or so. And if we have time at the end, we can do a wrap-up, but we often run out of time.
Okay.
Have everybody, so welcome.
Thank you. I'll give a quick opening. I, you have all the literature you need there. I'm basically an absentee vice professor, engineer, inventor, small business person. I don't have any conflicts of interest, and I no longer have any financial ties with Stanford. All my mentor classes are out, I get paid for it. I believe in a clear chain of command, and I think the city council should make policy, and the, the PTC should not make policy, they should implement policy and recommend policy for the city council. But I will say I'm one of only three citizens advocating to the Policy and Services Committee that we change the city charter to remove binding arbitration as a requirement. And for me, the, the essential issue is, I think the citizens should be in charge and responsible for the things the city does. And when the, when the binding arbitration happened, the citizens were no longer able to control what the city did. So that was my motive in doing that. Uh, that's most of it, but I guess I'll give you the endpoint for ten, ten seconds before leaving, which is, I think the important thing in choosing a counselor, I mean, a commissioner, is no conflicts of interest, a wide range of skills and experience. People who can get along with each other within the CC and people, and with the city council, and people who are willing to defer to the authority of the city council. You'll have many choices, and I'm comfortable with whatever choice you make, you have a great group of people applying. Thank you.
Thank you.
So who would like to kick it off? Liz?
So, number three is your, that's the question, a key issue, is traffic congestion and parking? And you went on from there to talk about our, our old-fashioned roads and so forth, want to say more?
I am a residentialist, but I'd like to say they're not monolithic in what they want. Our neighborhood was not opposed to second story, they were just opposed to thirty-foot high second story. And they were not opposed to big houses, but they didn't want them to be balloon houses. So when we tried to use our CCNR to outlaw, I mean, to reactivate our CCNR, it is active, but to repopulate it, we were two votes short. And the reason was, they really don't support what a CCNR could do, which is more control over the houses. But they would have gone along with something like an overlay, except that it takes a long time. So I'd say with most of the, many of the groups going for an overlay, it's not really what they want. It's sort of like that's the quickest they can get any of what they're looking for. As for traffic, the problem is the roads were designed in, in the nineteen fifties, and the population has doubled, and I don't know, the number of jobs has increased a lot more, so that will continue to go up. I'll give you a, I'm, I'm good at inventing solutions, and I would say, the smoother you make, you make the roads, and the wider you make the roads, the more they'll be full. You can't build the roads wide enough so that they're never busy. If you really want to limit traffic, it's, I'm not in favor of it, but, but road, road diets or speed humps, the way that you limit traffic. People that pay two million dollars for a house here are not going to ride the bus, they're going to buy a BMW. So you can't give them a good incentive unless they like the idea of biking, which they will much of the year. I would like to see bike, bike roads more prevalent within the city, maybe even some more posts in the city, so that you have roads that are more dedicated to bikers. The problem of crossing Alman, the train tracks, still needs to be resolved, and that's a really big one, and that's one of the hardest ones you'll face. Because we don't know if high-speed rail's going to happen or not, but if it does, things will be way worse, particularly if the train does not stop here. If it doesn't stop, it just thunders through at two hundred miles an hour. So as to what the city council can do, you can't really control the state roads very much. You could impose some taxes, like resident tax, or now you have a parking, sorry, a license plate reader, you could find a way to charge people on fast track for coming to the city. There are things you could do, but you'll only be able to get people to drive less by making it convenient for them to get here some other way.
Thank you. You'd like to say anything? Eric?
You've got a line that caught my eye in here, that I wonder if you could expand on a little bit. You said, "The basic problem is the city has not adopted a policy defining the rights of the new property owner versus those of nearby residents," which I thought was really intriguing.
It's really true.
What, yeah, so what would such a pol, what do you mean by that, and what would such a policy look like?
Example, so I live in an Eichler neighborhood, it was designed sixty years ago for small houses compared to the size of the lot. But the R one allowed a much larger house, but that's the way things grew up then, where we had small houses with a lot of outdoor windows, and that's the way we got used to it. We have forty people in our tract, forty owners in our tract, when one new person comes in, wants a McMansion house, it impacts all forty. But there's some balance of ownership, because the first question the new owner asks the real estate agent is, first question, how tall can it be and how big can it be? And if they don't get an answer, they'll go by somewhere else. It can, this can only be solved by the city having a policy, it's not fair for it to be fought out at the Planning Department appeals every time, on exactly the same issues every time.
So what would a policy like, what would the PTC's role, what would a policy look like, and what would the PTC's role be?
One example, one example I like is that, that the, the process within the Planning Department is not transparent at all. I would like to see them keep a list of precedents, for example, rather than designing a whole house before coming to ask for a permit, I'd like them to ask, I want to build it this tall and this big in floor area. Fight those out first before they even, with the architect designing anything. The first problem is, we tie up too many city resources, waiting way too late in the process, and then the city can twist their arm some about the guidelines, but they're only advisory. If the city were to push too hard, the owner would sue the city, so you, you put the Planning Department in a bad position, or they're required to say that they have satisfied the guidelines. We don't agree that they did satisfy the guidelines. We also saw a lot of documents come in from architects which are wrong, in my opinion, in a, in a deceptive way. For example, the drawings being wrong, or scaled wrong, or, or the viewpoint is from an angle that's not representative. So these are things that are wrong that need to be controlled, and I think the citizens are up in arms because they feel powerless. If you can tell them what the rules are and how it's going to be enforced, and make it clear what their rights are, I think you'll have a lot less resistance. It's not that, not that they're against second stories, it's they're against the tall buildings and the fat buildings.
So let's, let's talk about commercial real estate rather than residential. I don't know if you know there's a fifty thousand square foot annual limit. What, what do you think about that policy? We also passed a ground-floor retail production.
Let me answer this separately, the ground-floor retail, it makes a lot of sense within the, with downtown and California Avenue. I'm not sure that it makes sense on the corner of California and, and Oregon, the, the new proposed, um, high residency building. People don't walk around in that part of town, so I'm not sure that it makes sense to have retail on the first floor there. But generally, where there's public walking around, I definitely think you have to have that, otherwise a town will die, like it did in the fifties when Stanford Choppington was first built up. And so I think I skipped, I skipped the part of it, which was, give me the...
The office, in-office.
Oh, we have a three-to-one jobs imbalance now. In my mind, the only way to solve the problem is either build more housing or build less offices, or find a way to penalize people driving into work to minimize the traffic, which is one of the main problems. So you have ways to do that, and I would be on the residentialist side for being against building large houses, large buildings of large units. What we really need are small units, like, for example, the one on Oregon and El Camino. Except for the fact that if you allow, you have to be careful who you allow to live there, otherwise it'll be filled with people that work in Palo Alto, like Palantir, for example. That, that's the handiest, closest place to, why, why wouldn't they do it? They can outbid the people you really have, probably have in mind building it for. So how do you make it possible for people with lower income? That's a good question. Uh, the best answer I have for that is subdivisions are, to me, a really bad idea for any community, but they were built at a time when everyone drove and, and there was only one job per family. And I think suburbs, you can't just go in and say, I'm taking this block from you, but you could go make an offer to a block, saying, we'd like to buy every house in this block, and we're going to put up another Channing House on it, or something like that. Something like that could make sense. Right now, we have low density and old people like me living in it, and we, we need to find a way to make more, more room for more people.
Corey?
Actually, you've, uh, mentioned something I was going to ask you about, um, which was the Page Mill and El Camino, uh, project that hasn't really come to PTC yet, hasn't really come to the council yet in any official application capacity, only it's a pre-screening, but you clearly paid some attention to it.
There are people who came to our Thursday morning group and made their same kind of pitch, and sounded very reasonable to us, to me, anyway.
So what I, and you've, you've talked about the, who might reside there, and I'm curious to hear your thoughts, you know, envisioning, you know, hypothetically, you get appointed to the PTC, you're serving on PTC. That project or something similar to it comes forward, either that, for that site or another site. How would you, um, evaluate the, the parking issues that are a big concern around a project like that? How would you go about thinking about those kinds of issues and judging them?
In the presentation that I saw, they made big promises about how the people will be given all kinds of free permits for everything, travel and so on. And they're going to try to put people in, and include in the, in the deed, or the, or the lease that they can own a car. That doesn't mean it won't happen, but that was their statement. That's about parking, and certainly if all of those people were to park, you'll overrun the areas right around it. That has to be, you have to find an answer. I don't know how the, I don't know the legal aspect of how you can restrict that. You could also find that you rent a studio apartment, and two or three people move into it. Two or three people do a startup in it, is actually more likely around here. And, you know, they could bring cars, but hopefully you'll make it difficult enough, or find a way to restrict that. I'd say there's another issue you didn't touch on, and that is, there was the possibility of setting some of them aside for city employee, city employees or teachers. I really want teachers to be able to live in Palo Alto, but they have a seniority system. If you give it to the new people, the older people will say, hey, you know, we bled to live, to live here, we want some of the action too. I'm not sure how you'll, this is a policy issue for the council, I don't know how you handle that.
All right, well, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Frank, I realized, I think it's Joe Tartaglia who mentioned, you know Joe?
He was my boss for a period.
Well, he's evacuating.
He's what?
He's evacuating right now, uh, from this fire.
No kids over in Santa Cruz, is that up in the hills or something?
Yeah, he's behind U V S.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
They'll get out with all their stuff.
All right, thanks. Welcome. And I think you joined us last year, correct?
I did.
So you probably know the routine.
Sure.
A little shorter timeframe, we have ten minutes, and you're welcome to use the first minute or so for an opening remark, and if we have time at the end, you can do a wrap-up, we may not have time at the end.
All right, very good, so, so hopefully you remember, I am a twenty-three-year resident, twenty-three-years resident in Palo Alto. I have two kids going through Palo Alto Unified, quite experienced in the school district activities and the progress. I do work for a high-tech company. I do lead a engineering development, research and development, I build and design pressure sensors. Have a couple of engineering groups reporting to me globally, including US. Been here a couple of times, seeing familiar faces, and I think I met a couple of you, a couple of weekends, we've been enjoying on kickoff parties for board and council members. So that's a introduction. I can go a little bit more into my career, or volunteering job, yeah, please?
Great.
So you've been very involved with the school district, and I saw Max McGee sending us those letters, saying, you know, how wonderful it has been to work with you.
Oh, thank you.
Um, with your participation in the, in the school district, why are you pivoting to want to work on the Planning Commission?
Uh, sure, in fact, uh, one of the, um, uh, commission member was actually advising, invited me for the library commission, that I was here maybe last year or a couple of months ago. Really, uh, after working with me on E Mac, emphasizing how much work and structure could be, um, gained from my involvement. And, um, she introduced that, uh, on a library side. I further, um, study how much volunteering job there is, and working with the city in terms of the planning. Uh, it's something that my expertise is about, and something that transportation, um, consideration in terms of the environment, in term of the impact, in terms of the solution, something is also from some of my background expertise. And just simply saying that, um, it's not specifically focusing on the planning and transportation, but I think I could, um, be a valuable asset to the commission.
Great. Tom?
Yes, please.
Thanks for applying, again. So what do you think the city should do about parking?
Parking. Uh, sensitive subject. I think city already doing, uh, good results with the parking in terms of the zoning and ordinance, and, um, we should hear more, um, sensitive areas in the parking consideration. A bit more outside of the center, although in the center is very sensitive, where we attract, uh, young generation more, and in terms of how do we shift a traveler's mode? And maybe reduce the parking, but in, in far, as far as, um, what should we do? I think, uh, incentivized by the zoning, that seems to be working in good progress, that you guys introduced, uh, some time ago. Strongly looking into participation of, um, commuters and shifting the mind in terms of, can parking be reversed in terms of shifting them to bicycles? Shifting them to commuting and sharing the area. That's in short, um, some recommendations in terms of what to do with the parking. Limiting some area where I see discussion, limiting some zones, usually capping is a bit concerning, in terms of really capping, limiting, it's always a dynamic to generate maybe unhappiness and preferences. But, um, really working with the commuters and trying to shift the mode, and enhancing the zoning, zoning ordinance, I think that's been helpful, and show the results, at least we see the results.
Next? Did you go, Corey?
Curious to hear, you know, your thoughts about how the Planning and Transportation Commission can advise the council? Particularly if, you know, say hypothetically, you and other members of the commission might have a particular view, the council might have a different view. But let's say you send something to the council with your recommendation, council says, you know, we kind of want you to do something different, and sends it back. How would you go about navigating, um, being responsive to council, and balancing that with, you know, your own prior inclinations?
Yeah, facilitating is something that is really a, um, a challenge, and I think it's facilitating a different point of view, different opinions, and again, the commission is a supplementary work for the council. You guys have views, you guys have citizens contacting you, and really understand why, for example, work of the commission is not satisfactory of the supporting decision. Maybe there are directions that could be compromised and been missed. Uh, that's, that could be one of the approach to, uh, sort of a conflict or disagreement, uh, delegation and mitigation. Having a different opinion is okay. Finding the consensus and, um, facilitating the disagreements, that's, um, is important. I usually recommend to maybe review again where the background of each side coming from, and very importantly, if something was missed, or not evidence-based, or not research-based, or not opinion-based. So that, um, again, the most important is, I know that you guys have a goal for the best cause, and public commission has a goal for the best cause. Understanding that commission is a supporting role, plays a supporting role. As I say, maybe we didn't ask enough questions to understand what clearly directions were. That will be my, just quick thought.
Uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask, uh, first, how familiar are you with our current comprehensive plan and the work that's being done on our new comprehensive plan, and then I'll have a follow-up question.
Okay, I actually, um...
Just whether, just tell me whether you're, you are familiar or not, or a little bit, or a lot?
Yes, I am, um, I can say that I'm, uh, very well familiar, it requires a lot of work and, and being very tuned. And I really appreciate, uh, the works that's being compiled. I do, um, see decisions made, lots of difficult decisions made on a comprehensive plan. I also see lots of inputs that council members already bringing in new ideas and updating it.
So what I was going to ask as a follow-up, are there any particular areas in the current comprehensive plan that you think should be changed in the new one? Or any things that in the, in the draft new one, that you either really agree with the changes that are occurring, or disagree?
Should be in a discussion, for example, the, um, planning of, um, just recent poll, recent source went around the C, uh, town in terms of, do we, um, the renting of, uh, and capacity of the downtown and the workers, for example. That's is a little bit, uh, areas that I spent, spent a little bit more time to follow. I don't think it should be changed, this, this particular one, I've done, as I say, I look at, even make few notes. There was a very good report done by a couple, a couple, uh, teams that work with you. by a couple of, a couple of teams that work with you. Choosing one, the proposals one, choosing one which, which direction to go is something that I think we need to work a little bit more.
Okay. Anyone else?
It's a difficult decision, right? It's staying on the right side. It's a difficult decision.
Karen?
So I asked somebody else, if there was a headline that you'd want to see, let's say looking five years out, what's the headline that you would look forward to seeing referring to Palo Alto? Just a headline.
Okay. One minute, two minutes?
Just a headline.
Right. All right. Really resolving a Palo Alto mobility.
Okay.
The population grows and it will grow. We're looking at what, we're 39 million now, California, and projected growth will be at 20, 35, maybe 50 million. The mobility will impact economics and conditions on our streets. So resolving this according to population growth probably will be a big challenge. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Right?
Thanks for having me.
Okay.
Thank you for all these things.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Gabriel Krowick. Welcome. Down at the, yeah, the hot seats down at the end there. Well, welcome.
Thanks.
So our process is, we have 10 minutes to chat with you, and you're welcome to take the first minute or so if you want to provide some opening remarks. If we have time at the end, you can do a wrap-up as well, but we may not have that time.
Well, the last time I had a minute to make an impression, I was 19 years ago in a hotel in Hong Kong, riding from the 22nd floor down to ground floor, and I met my wife on the 16th floor. And by the time we got down, I had made a good impression. I guess I had my elevator...
It's a hotel in Hong Kong.
Yeah. I had my elevator pitch going that morning. But, you know, on reflection, I really didn't say that much. I actually listened. And I found out that she needed to get some water and various sundry items because she just got off a plane like myself and I knew where the grocery store was. So, and I guess that, that kind of is my pitch as a mediator.
Where is the grocery store?
It was just a couple of blocks away in Hong Kong. But, you know, it was really a couple of years ago, I switched over from being a litigator and a general counsel into a mediator. And since then, I've been working on probably over 200 cases, mostly through the county, all different types of cases and cases that don't involve patents, which is kind of the major portion of my resume. And my hope is to be a good listener as a commissioner and to connect with the council. You know, I view that position as being really a recommendation position, not a policy-setting position. And I've had an experience running for city government. Over in Pleasanton, I ran for mayor, and I was also in the leadership Pleasanton as well as the leadership Palo Alto programs. So I've had some exposure to the inner workings of city government and understanding of commissions and their roles. And my hope is to be a good listener and to try to find out what items you need from the grocery store, so to speak. And that's my opening pitch.
So I saw you moved here from Pleasanton just a few years ago. Wondered if you could kind of compare and contrast the kind of Palo Alto to Pleasanton and how you see them different, how you see...
Yes, I was telling your former applicant that actually the first time I came here, I worked for Syntex, which is over on Foothill, off of Foothill Road. And that was 1990 and I... Yeah. Well, it's moved now to VMware, right? So I spent three months in the Garden Court Hotel. So I've been here quite a while. But they're both wonderful communities, outstanding schools. The focus of Pleasanton, I would say, is, is really a community-based approach, a lot of families. The biggest days in Pleasanton are the 2,000 people that march in the soccer parade. And it's also the location of Alameda County Fairgrounds. And it's got a lot of different things going. There's a good high-tech and business group there, a good chamber of commerce, outstanding businesses. So Oracle, Kaiser Permanente, Safeway, which has, I think, been bought out. But, so they have wonderful employers. They're, they're in the Tri-Valley area. So there's an interaction with other cities, much like Palo Alto has interaction with other cities in the Silicon Valley. Transportation is very tough, just like Palo Alto. It's on corridors, you know, the 87, 101 corridor, corridor over the bridge. It's kind of akin to the 680, 580 juncture. So they have a lot of regional traffic issues the same way. So similar-sized communities in terms of, you know, the population, very close, actually. And similar number of families and homesteads. So an awful lot of similarity.
Corey?
In your, in your application for question two, you mentioned the Page Mill and El Camino project that we recently heard a pre-screening of. We haven't taken any formal action on it and hasn't really come to PTC yet. Envision, thinking about not just that project, but projects similar to it, you know, using that maybe as an example. How would you go about considering traffic impacts, parking impacts, of particular note is this concept of having a car light development and how you enforce that and, and judge whether that's a real possibility or pie in the sky promises? And how would you go about evaluating something like that?
Well, I think overall, it's, it's kind of, what I said, it was hopeful. And I don't mean that, you know, aspirational in the sense of hope. I mean more innovative. And so hope is really innovation to me. And I think you have some very unique problems with, you know, three times the number of workers as the number of residents who come here. And I think the hope or innovation that you have to deal with is you've had build-out. And you want to figure out, can you get some of the people, especially people that have safety positions and teaching positions, to be local and to live local? If the police force, fire department, others have these problems that they express in the leadership group, that they need people to be local. I mean, those are the things that innovate. Now, you asked about very specifics related to the car light, the idea that it would be kind of a variance of what is typical. And I think you have to look at traffic impacts and you have to look at inputs from other people and find out what that impact is going to be before you get there. In Pleasanton, we had an example where there was an extension that was going right into 680, and it was going right into the middle of residential area. And the traffic impacts looked terrible. And what they did is they kind of pushed it to a different direction, and they put in traffic lights. And so they mitigated those impacts. And so those are the things that you look to to make sure that you're doing good and not doing harm. So it's kind of a, a concept of, you know, making something better, answering your needs, but still making something better and mitigating those impacts. It's near a corridor, right? It's near the, the Caltrans area that, you know, people could get access to it. I think the other thing is you want to have quality of life too. You know, you don't want people to be unexcited about living on top of traffic places. And, you know, you have a little bit of, I think, a reputation to uphold as Palo Altans. And so you want, you know, a quality living space for someone. And you want to be sure that that's something that's going to be attractive to them. You want to attract people to live here. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you. Liz?
So mine picks up right where Corey left off. You're interested in the development that we were just discussing. Because you said it gives hope that Palo Alto can attract technology workers to both live and work here.
Yes.
And some would argue that there are already a lot of tech workers here. But was your goal that you were looking at that particular area that you reference as good area for...
Yeah, I mean, some of this I have to learn.
Cars and so forth?
Sure. I have to learn this a little bit, to be frank. I, I don't know if, if we're looking at areas and looking at sort of a comprehensive development of a particular area, or we're looking at a specific project from a developer and how that works out. But I'll just kind of give you my impressions. There's some big employers, HP, VMware, and some others, and of course Stanford University. And I see, you know, since 1990, when I first came here, a lot of living spaces that Stanford has built. May not be right next to Page Mill Road or other places, but they seem to have added places for people to live right nearby. And I know some people who actually work at Stanford, who live off of Sand Hill Road there. This is near a corridor, near Caltrans. It could not only service people here in Palo Alto, but other tech companies and along the Caltrans corridor here. But, you know, my, my hope is that I can listen to your guidelines in terms of what are your priorities to meet with council, to understand those priorities. And if I see something that matches, I want to be sure I take a very close look at it. I understand that getting people who work here to live here answers a lot of traffic concerns. And I think that's probably pretty important in terms of trying to lower the amount of traffic through. Stanford, when I, when I was at the leadership Palo Alto, studied traffic very, very carefully. And they put in a lot of innovation. Some of it was living, but it's not the only innovation to solve that problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much.
Okay, that was short, but thanks so much. It's nice to meet you.
You too.
Really appreciate the privilege. Okay.
All right. Michelle here? No, where's Michelle?
Let me go and check if she's here. She's out there.
David's gone.
Mm-hmm. That's during the hurricane.
Yes. Welcome. So welcome.
Hi. Thank you.
So our process is that we have about 10 minutes to talk together. And you're welcome to take the first minute or so if you would like to provide some opening remarks. And, and then if we have time at the end, we can do a wrap-up. But we are tending to not have time at the end, but just to give you a feel.
Okay. I'm Michelle Kraus. Many of you know me, many of you don't. I'm very involved in the future of transportation and regulation and policy. Pat and Liz have both been with me at a public hearing on feasibility studies for the future of this region. I serve as the head of Hyperloop Transportation Technologies, head of regulatory and policy and government affairs. So I'm looking at the global implications on how we live, how we work, how we play going into the future. That's a very big part of why I'm here this evening. I think that Palo Alto should be the leader in policy. We should step forward. We should look at advanced innovation because it will change the kind of world that we live in for now and for going forward. Hypothetically, Pat and Liz, you were in that meeting. Facebook is talking about hiring droves of people. Am I talking loud on it? Okay. They're talking about a thousand a month. That becomes feasible when you start looking at advanced transportation. Not everyone has to live in Palo Alto, but we have to be able to lead in terms of thought and policy and innovation on how this is implemented. So I spend a great deal of time doing that in one of my day jobs. Just a footnote for you. I have not been tremendously locally active for the last 10 years. I have been active at the most senior level in the government. I have been an ambassador of sorts for elected officials from all over the world. I have served on the president's finance committees, and now more recently on the Democratic National Committee and the Hillary Rodman Clinton Committee going forward. I'm extraordinarily involved. It is my favorite nonprofit because I think we have an obligation to do so. But I've been walking through since I was probably eight. It was safe to do that back then. And my family, my parents said, we can't have secrets. You're out canvassing the neighborhood. You're talking. You're discussing. So I'm back to canvassing the neighborhoods. So ask away.
Liz?
So we know, Michelle and I have known each other a long time, for disclosure. You are busy. You travel a lot.
I do.
This group meets fairly frequently and usually, you know, we all stay late at night. Tell me how that'll, that, how will that fit into your schedule? As you mentioned, you're very involved at the national level and so forth.
Yeah. I work a lot. People like me do that. An 80-hour week is not unusual. As your former mayor and my dear friend Sid Espinoza has been an exemplary model for me. He used to do his Microsoft work at night and do his Palo Alto work during the day. We can make that happen. I'm not traveling as much as I used to. And for Hyperloop and these particular clients, I'm focusing domestic. So I'm not gone as much as I used to be. And that's a good thing. So I'm around more. And you give things to busy people. And for disclosure, I know many of you. You know that. And there are long-term friendships and relationships. Yes, sir. No?
Great.
You mentioned that the new modes of transportation may transform tax structures.
Tax?
Tax structures.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about...
Absolutely.
Tax structures.
Well, we're looking at that particularly regarding tubular travel. And talking at the federal level with the Department of Transportation, we're trying to decide whether tubular travel is a train and if it will be subject to the same tariff systems. So as this is architected, there may be monies that come from this in some unusual ways as we're looking to the future.
You're talking about federal, dog?
Federal, state, regional. If they say a train, then they will have the onerous tariffs that are part of the transcontinental railway system. railway system. So, we're now having conversations about subsidies and how they will work. And moreover, think of this as a traveling solar farm, giving energy back to the grid. And there may be some benefits to that, for the regions that support it. So, I'm very interested in how we finance and how we look at municipal tax structures to support innovation.
I guess the problem with California and Prop 13 is local governments do not get much from
I know that. That's a different, yeah. I understand. I understand. I can only do what I can do within the structure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for applying.
You're welcome.
And given your work, do you anticipate any conflicts of interest in participating on the Planning Commission and Transportation Commission?
I'm hoping not, and if there is, I will make sure it, I recuse myself, period. We're not looking at building in Palo Alto. We're actually the first implementation at Central Valley. We may not do, well, never mind, I can't publicly say that, Central Valley. But I'm very interested in Dunbar Corridor, and what that opens up as a gateway to solve many of the issues that this town is split on, of how we have housing, where we put housing, how it becomes affordable. But I'll be the first one to raise my hand if there's a conflict. I am really, when it comes to that, yeah.
One of the things, there's been a lot of dialogue about in the last year is autonomous vehicles, and you know, you see them driving around here and so forth, always prototypes. How should the council and its commissions, such as, especially the PTC, how should we think about policy around self-driving cars?
I'm not sure I have a complete answer for that one. That's a huge issue.
How should we approach it? What should we think about as we do that?
As you look at policy issues?
Yeah, I know, it's going to take a long time to develop policy, but how should we approach it?
I think you should be looking at the timeline, the, you know, how long is this going to take? Where are the milestones along the way? What's going to be here, here, here into the future? And then begin to articulate policy around it. I'm happy to have longer confrontations. I mean, I also advise AutoTech Ventures, which are investing on autonomous technologies in particular. There's also metering technologies for how traffic lights work, how they're computerized, how, and you should be looking at those issues as well, because it's all part of urban grid. You know, how do you break that grid? So, I think you have a, you need a timeline, and then we need to look at hubs for what will be done then, what's the next jump, what's the next jump, and how you develop regulation around that, particularly safety.
Cory?
Thank you for applying. In your response to question three, in talking about your goals that you'd like to see the PTC achieve, you talk about rental units across generations. You phrase it as a question. I'm curious if you have more you can clarify about your goals around, you know, cross-generational rental opportunities.
Well, you know, first of all, policy is set by council, and we follow the directive. I am extraordinarily interested, and I, in full disclosure, am a renter and have been on and off in 20 years. I'm just very interested in how we articulate the different kinds of opportunities we need to prepare ourselves for as this population ages. I mean, what you need in your 20s and 30s is not what you need in your 50s and 60s and twilight years, shall we call them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle. Like, does it have you walked? No, I have to make a shivakor. I'm driving.
Well, I'm guessing you remember the routine, but we, this time we only have 10 minutes per candidate, and you're welcome to spend the first minute or so with opening remarks. And if we have time at the end, we can do a wrap-up, but we may not have extra time at the end.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mayor Bert, and Vice Mayor Scharf. Good evening, council members. Thank you very much for having me. It's been only two and a half years since I was part of the interview like this, and I think that in the opening remarks, I should just provide a statement, I should provide the argument why I would like to ask about your support for the next term. And one of the reasons is pretty much that this was not a full term. I was elected by yourself 2 and 1/2 years ago, which is not the full term of a member of a PTC. So, that's one of the reasons I would like to pretty much just serve as the others who have the opportunity to. So, another aspect of I, why I would like to be part of this body is pretty much my professional background, that I am a licensed architect. I included my registration in the application. And also, I've listed a couple of places where I worked as an architect, in the United States and also in Europe. And also, at the beginning of this millennia, I worked with my wife. We just had a small studio, and we designed a couple of houses also in Palo Alto. I didn't include this in the application, but this was part of my professional career. And then it pretty much stays, it's attraction to architecture, planning, it stays in my blood. And although this, one day I just departed this profession, because having so many architects in one household, it may not be appropriate designation for all the members, but so I chose other path. But you know, since my wife is, works in this field, we talk about architecture all the time and planning. So, and that's pretty much, it's a professional reason. I think about myself as a professional. And also, when I serve you on the Planning and Transportation Commission, I position myself from this perspective. I think that the biggest value that commission may provide is just to provide, to serve you with the highest professional advice, and identify all the possible solutions, and provide you with the best recommendation. And I was trying to be true to those principles, and whatever discussions we had, my comments or my vote was always following this professional, professional aspects, how the city should work, from the planning, transportation, but also from the granular perspective. I would like the city, or town, rather, just to be us, the street that I live on, that I know of each person on the street. We have a woman that plays, that is a part of the quartet, music, and then she plays every Wednesday to us, to the entire street. There is a retired city librarian. There is a professional couple, couple living across my fence. There is a Russian immigrant living on the same street. So, when I think about the city, I also think from the people's perspective. That complements my professional thinking.
So, you're the vice-chair of the Planning Commission. You may be chair next year. What do you think your approach to being chair would be? And what do you think works and doesn't work on the PTC, given that PTC really hasn't been in sync with council in many instances?
Right. I mean, this is a fair question, of course, right? So, I think that last two years were not very fortunate from this perspective, that the commission didn't align itself with the council. I think about this differently. I mean, there is a, first of all, there is a fundamental difference. You are being, you were elected by the public. We were nominated by yourself. And for this reason, we pretty much, we should see ourselves as the body that has been appointed by yourself to perform the duty along the Chapter 19 of the Palo Alto Municipal Council, and then serve you with the best professional opinion. Of course, sometimes it may not work as we wish, because there could be some outliers that may want to just, some votes or voices that may, because of different reasons, want to either express themselves or still the agenda toward different topics. But regardless of certain obstacles, I think that even the last two years were full of many professional discussions. And how I see myself, I see myself as the person that tries to stay the course, as the person that tries to catch or identify and promote those items that are truly important from the professional perspective, how to truly build a town, and how to protect the town from outside influence. That may not be desirable, because we want to just make sure that this town is owned by the public, by the
Outside influence, what do you mean by that?
By this, I mean that there is, that the primary, that we are responsible in a primary way to the citizens of Palo Alto, to Palo Altons. And I think this is our primary responsibility. And we need to, we need to, they give us the mandates, and we need to fulfill this mandate. And then I think that this should be part of our responsibility.
Karen?
How did you vote on the office cap that the council sent to the Planning Commission to comment on? How did you vote on having an office cap? And why did you, why did you vote the way you did? And if there's anything else you want to say around that? Because that was one of the big controversies this year.
Right. So, I think that, I think that, I think that, because, I think that I was fortunate, because I was on a business trip, so I didn't have a chance. So, I didn't have a chance to, I didn't
And you didn't even phone it in.
I was, I was busy working in Pennsylvania at the time. But if I may just respond in a different way, right? So, in my application for the next term, I included some remarks about how I think about, not the office cap, but how I think about the alignment of the large corporations or large organizations that are stationed in Palo Alto, which I think of as regional institutions. And I think that they have a larger scale, larger influence than small businesses or individual citizens. And then I think that pretty much there should be some distinction between the alignment of the responsibilities and the influence, that larger influence the body, organization or corporation has, larger responsibility it should take. Example may be Transportation Management Association program, right? And that is something that is happening with Facebook in Menlo Park. We have also some organizations that we may, that we may ask to engage more effectively in the TMA program because of their sheer scale and influence.
Thank you.
Taking your time on PTC, can you, can you give us a moment where you, you're proud of a personal impact you had on the commission?
Yes, I think that, I think that there were many of moments like this. But regardless of each vote, we are always, we are, each one of them, which one of us is only 1/7 of the whole body. So, sometimes our votes, they may be, sometimes we may influence others, sometimes we may not. I think that, I think that when we were looking into the second dwelling unit, something that is still being considered, I think that I influenced the commission, although this topic is not, is not over yet. We also had Build 2 line, that there were several specific, several specific parking regulations, and those are very technical, so I just don't want to take time, right? So, I was also proud of my vote and my comments on this.
Great.
PTC has dealt a lot with traffic analysis, TIA's, and cumulative traffic seems to be an issue where the models we use don't capture what we experience over time. What's your feeling about the models we use on, for cumulative traffic analysis?
So, we are changing, we are changing from the model of analysis, from the service, from the vehicle service to the VMT, right? Thank you very much. Which seemed to be, which seemed to be more appropriate. And I think that it still shall, it remains to be seen how that change is going to affect the number of the congestion. But when we looked at those analyses, it looked, those, that change looked very reasonable to us.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Wasn't that fast?
It was very fast. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? I'm good. Yourself? How do you hold it up? Good. We see the end in sight.
So do I.
So, we have about 10 minutes to be able to talk, and you're welcome to take a minute at the beginning to provide some introductory remarks. If we have time at the end, you can do a wrap-up, but we probably won't have much of time.
Well, I don't think I need a wrap-up, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. I thought I would just tell you why I'm here tonight, and that is, in the time I've been paying attention to the issues here, which is about a year, give or take, it's my sense that this commission has become a bit of a bully pulpit, and even to the extent sometimes of having pretensions of setting policy. And I think that that, combined with a pretty dismal record of canceling its public meetings, is something that really needs to change. And I think that needs to change in a pretty mindful way. I think there are some aspects of this job that are pretty challenging, but I think the approach to it is not that complicated. I think commission members need to do their homework before they show up, and they need to show up and hold their meetings when they're scheduled. And then they need to take the questions that are in front of them and analyze them based on the current plans, policies, codes, and so forth, and make a recommendation to you, the council. And that's the job. And I think that that's, that's the approach that I want to take to it and the contribution I want to make to it. And that's it.
Thank you. If you'd like to kick it off. So, I'll go ahead and start. So, are you moderately familiar with both our current comprehensive plan and the drafts that are coming, being worked on?
No.
Okay. So, then I will ask a question a little differently. Are there areas that you think the city, the comprehensive plan is where we set overriding policy? This is really the one place where, by our charter, the Planning and Transportation Commission would participate in policy more so. Are there any major policy issues around planning or transportation that you think we should be changing from what we've been doing in the past?
I said no to you, because I actually applied to the comprehensive plan. I was, I applied twice, and I did not get a position there, and I'm on the mailing list. But I think the honest answer to understanding any detail in that process is no. There's lots of things I'm interested in. As you know, I've been active in Evergreen and RPP, so the issue of transportation is pretty important to me. I did spend some time before I made before I made this application online, five or six hours. Uh, and I was able to make some connections between different items there. But my honest evaluation of that process was it taught me how little I know. I hear a lot of terminology thrown around and then I see what's going on in our neighborhood. So if I was to identify something that I find particularly interesting, it's this whole notion of how we're gonna transform the city from a car-based or an overly car-based, uh, mode into a multimodal system. And it seems to be a lot of emphasis on bicycles. And I guess my view is something like autonomous cars are probably inevitable, but things like electric bikes are probably more realistically in the near term. I live on what's now a major bike path. Just down the road is a new major spur to that. And one of my biggest concerns is not having bikes there, but the management of that transition so that the combination of cars and bikes and pedestrians is made as safe as possible. And I do that from experience. My daughter was loading her, her car in front of her house when a very athletic man riding out of Stanford knocked her to the ground on his bicycle. He left and she wound up in the hospital having her face stitched back together. And I live on that street every day. I think bikes are important. And I think that's the direction of the future. But I know what it's like to try to back out of there and to look one way up towards the roundabout up the street, look the other way, and turn back. And I already have bicycles going at a fairly high rate of speed down the street. So I think that's a very difficult problem that really needs to be addressed. And when it, with respect to our RPP, it's my view that we have a limited number of parking spots, but in order to enable that safety, we're probably gonna have to reduce that number. I think the intersections are difficult. They're hard to see around. I know we don't control El Camino, but there's a lot of problems exiting into El Camino. I think it's very dangerous. So as we move towards increasing emphasis, particularly on bikes and a mix of pedestrian, uh, transport, mobility, I guess is what we call it now, I think that needs to be carefully managed. And unfortunately, I think that the cost of doing that is not being considered. Because I don't think it's enough to have a contract parking enforcer to do it. I think you actually have to have somebody who can enforce the traffic laws for everyone in concern, whether they're in a car or on a bike or on foot. Electric bikes, I think, are particularly interesting, but to me, they appear to be motorized vehicles. And they travel at a high rate of speed. And like electric cars, they're hard to hear. So that, that creates other kind of unintended issues to deal with. So that's an area I'm quite interested in. And since I live in this neighborhood, which is small, but right in the center of one of the major areas of development in this city, and where a lot of this activity going forward is going to take place, I have sort of a personal stake in it and I think a perspective from that.
Tom?
So I guess I'd say outside of Evergreen Park, what do you think the city should do about parking?
Outside of Evergreen?
Yeah, I know you're involved with Evergreen Park, but I'd like to hear.
Well, you know, I don't really think, uh, that's a really good question because the appreciation I've gotten from this experience and from listening to you and going to a few meetings and attending this study session, I think a week ago last, last night, uh, is sort of like whack-a-mole. You know, you try to address one problem and other issues emerge. So I think it's a very difficult problem. And one of the problems that's being raised the most is you, uh, in, you, you imply or institute an RPP or other limitations in one neighborhood and they spill over into another. So I'm not quite sure how you address that. But in some cities that I go to work in to do certain jobs, like Berkeley, you can't park a car on the street without a permit. It doesn't really matter what neighborhood you're in. So, um, I guess my feeling is certain neighborhoods are being affected first and foremost by this transition. I think that it's going to be uneven how they're affected. But the entire issue, just like housing, needs to be looked at through the lens this more regional than simply centered on the city.
Okay. Corey?
From the city and regional level down to more parcel level, um, but with perhaps implications for what you were just talking about. Um, we've heard recently, uh, we had a study session, pre-screening, maybe, I don't know if that was the one you were referring to, uh, for a project that is proposing less parking than we normally allow under our, our zoning and parking regulations, uh, with the, you know, the, the potential promise from the developer that they would be able to mitigate how many cars are required by residents there. Uh, some think that that's a great opportunity. Some think it's pie in the sky promises. Uh, this is all an open question. I'm curious how, as a member of the PTC, you would go about evaluating, um, proposals and promises, um, and, you know, thinking about enforcement around parking requirements?
Well, that's a really good question. Uh, but I don't wanna wing anything here. And I said at the very top of my application that I'm new to this. I think a lot of people who've taken these jobs have been new to it. My first job is to get more oriented. So I really don't have a good answer to that question. I was curious to see that the developer suggested on their own an RPP. I thought that was quite fascinating. Uh, particularly since, uh, basically as I see them, an RPP starts, the restriction starts at nine in the morning and it ends at three. And if I was living in one of those apartments, I don't understand how you could bar somebody from owning a car. But that would allow me to own a car and to commute to work and come back. It would fit nicely with my work hours. So I think there's a lot of questions there to ask. And if I'm appointed to this, I'm gonna have to put some real work into trying to understand the context. So if I'm, if I am appointed, why don't you come back and ask me that in three or four months? Cause I'll probably have a better answer.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Who else?
So I've asked a couple others, like, so if you were looking down the road, say five years, ten years, let's say five years. And you wanted to see, you were looking forward to, like, what's the headline in the newspaper, Palo Alto Weekly? What would your best headline be about Palo Alto?
That it had finally achieved economic diversity.
Excellent.
And, uh, I have some pretty strong ideas about how that might work. But again, I have a lot to learn before I can determine how realistic they are. That said, I don't see this body as having much to do with policy. I think that's your job. So what's important? Well, what I think is really important for anybody taking this position, if they're given an opportunity to do that, is to ask them a que, themselves a question. Could they vote against a project that they really, really believe in? Or conversely, could they vote against, vote against a project they really, really believe in? Could they vote for one that they really, really don't like? And I think that's a pretty tough question. And I've asked myself that. And I think that's a question anybody who takes this job should take at this time. Because at the end of the day, that's really what the job is.
Great. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
We get more from other settings, yeah. Um, so, uh, the way this works is we have around ten minutes to be able to talk. And, uh, if you'd like to take the first minute or so for introductory remarks, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Great. All right. I did, I prepared a little, I'm gonna read the whole page. Um, so hi, my name is Jessica Resmini and I'd like to serve on the Planning and Transportation Commission because I care about Palo Alto. So, just like I think all the other applicants. Um, I feel a sense of duty to participate where I can, especially if my background, professional experience, and perspective as a resident, raising kids here can help to inform decisions. In recent years, my volunteer time has been locally at our public schools. But as my kids are a little older now, our world and my bandwidth to participate and help the larger community is starting to expand beyond our school community. While I understand the growth that is happening due to the good fortune of our economy has created, I'm also interested in preserving neighborhood character and the small-town feel that we moved here for, from San Francisco about ten years ago. I'm a renter and a landlord, property owner. I've been a small business owner. I've lived in Midtown, Barron Park, and now near the old Edgewood Plaza. I'm a licensed architect. I've worked on new single-family homes from ground up, as well as remodeled Eichlers in historically sensitive ways, and helped families adjust to multi-generational living. And prior to living in Palo Alto, I served as the Chair in the Coastside Design Review Committee. Nowadays, you can find my kids and I commuting on our bikes to school. And after dropping them off, I jet down Bryant to work in Portable C at the Palo Alto District Office, where I'm currently managing the capital improvement project at Hoover Elementary School. While my decade in Palo Alto might make me a relative newcomer, my husband's grandparents first arrived here from the Philippines in the late sixties with seventeen family members in tow to the house that my in-laws still live in today. My husband went to Palaverde, Jordan, JLS, Paly, and then made the big journey across El Camino to Stanford. And here we are, raising our kids today. So, um, I wrote a little bit more. Do you guys wanna hear more about me? Or do you wanna jump into questions?
You probably should go ahead and go into questions.
Good. I also, what's that?
Let's grill it.
Um, and then I noticed a lot of people submitted resumes online. So I brought mine. If you wanna pass it around.
Sure.
Um, I kind of half-heartedly applied. I heard about the opening on Nextdoor. Um, and I didn't think anybody else would apply. I, it was such a, so, um, so I wasn't, you know, it seems like you have an amazing array of applicants, which is actually really hopeful and awesome. So, yeah.
It's the largest pool, you think, we've ever had.
That's great. Yeah.
Okay, Tom?
So I'll ask you the question I've been asking most people tonight.
Yes.
What do you think the city should do about parking?
Oh, you're gonna give me a minute to answer that? Just solve that problem? Let me just solve that. Um, you know, I honestly probably don't have all the facts that I would be able to answer that intelligently. Um,
Any ideas?
I personally would give every resident who lives here in the community a electric bicycle, you know, or a, a credit to go purchase an electric bicycle. Um, I mean, that's, you know, off the cuff. Um, I don't, you know.
Would they be required to use it?
You know what? It's the best purchase I've ever made. And it makes me so happy every day. Riding along and everything's just flying off and, um, any negative energy. So I think that they would. Yeah.
I thought you meant you were littering.
No, no. Metaphysical negative energy. So, I mean, I know that that's sort of a non-answer in some ways. Um, I, I guess, uh, so, you know, some people might say an architect has experience in, um, planning and working with jurisdiction and project management and that sort of thing. I think my biggest asset as an architect is working with people and speaking candidly and listening. And so, um, you know, I'm not going to, I would not sit on this committee and pretend like I have all the answers that I'm gonna solve these problems, you know, overnight. But I think I have the ability to, I have a huge network that I talk to and listen to. And I think I would tap into them and hear what the buzz is. Um, and sort of try to come to some common ground, you know, in any question that you pose. So I don't think I would sit here and try and answer anything off. So I could keep talking. Sorry.
Just real quick, Tom, remember, you don't have to ride the bike. All you have to do is have some of your neighbors who wanna ride it.
Yes, exactly. Yeah.
I think it was Karen, thanks.
So given that you've openly admitted that you're not very good at, at forecasting or predicting what's gonna happen.
Yes.
What's your personal feeling, though, about the fifty-foot height limit?
Well, um, so anecdotally, is that how you pronounce it, anecdotally? Um, as an architect, people come to me and they have these, you know, little fourteen-hundred square foot homes. And they say, okay, we wanna add a second floor and we're gonna convert the garage. We need all this extra space. And most of the time, I talk them out of the project. Because I say, well, what about all this square footage? Let's put in some built-ins. Let's use this space. Let's get rid of some of this stuff. Let's find the space that's not being used. Right? So I could say that about Palo Alto as well, right? That, you know, the fifty-foot is a really hot topic. And I don't think, you know, there's a right or wrong. I don't think if some buildings go over fifty foot, Palo Alto's gonna end. Right? I mean, we're not gonna implode into the fault. But, um, is there a way to find, eke out some unused space? Are there a lot of empty homes that are not being used for whatever reason? Are there?
Let's talk about commercial space or.
Commercial, yeah. I mean, there's a lot of untapped square footage in Palo Alto, which is really surprising. That's my personal opinion. So again, without, you know, having documents and real issues that I've, can like really sink my teeth into, I, you know, I, I don't really like to be put on the spot. And I don't really like to have a opinion. What I do for clients is I funnel what they want. So what do you want? And I think that actually goes, I mean, the, the challenges I see with the comprehensive plan is, you know, clarity. And I, I like to take somebody's vision and see it through. Right? So I think the community is really close at, um, setting those goals and setting that vision. And then, again, as an architect, I will take those rules and use clarity and benefit my clients. Right?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Um, yeah. So in your, um, application, you wrote, under, you know, what specific goals did you have? You wrote, "Safety and Responsible Growth."
Yeah.
Two primary goals.
Yeah.
Maybe you could elaborate as what that means to you.
Yeah. Well, I kind of, I risk my life on a daily basis with my six-year-old and my nine-year-old, um, driving around town in our bikes. And, you know, I feel like a mother duck. And, um,
Going over the grate, right?
Going over the grate, yeah. Exactly. So, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of energy here, good energy. And there's a lot of rushed energy. And we have to channel that energy. Right? And so, um, safety on bikes and pedestrians, I mean, we have all these different needs to be met with the kids and the parents. And my husband, that's a techie. And I love that we've protected the techies downtown. I'd also love to protect the kids in front of my elementary school. So, um, so that's the safety that I'm talking about. I think the, the relationship between these mobility, modes of mobility and, um, and then, what was the second part that I said my goal was?
Responsible growth.
And responsible growth, right? Like, that's, that's a little bit loaded. What does that mean?
You wrote it.
Right. Yeah. And I think nobody would deny that. Right? Is that the goal that everybody here wants?
I wanna know what you meant by responsible.
Yeah. So growth, okay, here's the thing. Everybody want, we've created a city that's amazing. Right? Everybody wants to live here. Um, we've created a situation where people want to invest here because it's so amazing. Right? Um, and so what I do see is people that are here wanting to continue to make the community a better place really can't afford to live here. So I don't know how we can incentivize people to live here and be part of the community. And, um, you know, and it, not fisc, not necessarily financially, but it is a luxury to be able to come here and apply. You know, I have my in-laws here. I have a, a deep roots here that allow me to be here because I have my in-laws here. My father-in-law is with the kids tonight. Um, I Um, I, we rent from family, which gives me the security to know that, you know, next month, it's not going to go up $1,000. So, I'm rambling a little bit. So, what does responsible growth mean? That's also a really complicated thing. I guess it's about being thoughtful, right? And protecting the, the people that we think are important.
Okay. Corey last question? Nope, Greg?
Um, you said upfront, you don't like to be put on the spot.
Yes, yeah. Actually, I think it's fun.
In a way, Palo Alto...
Yes.
Is on the spot.
Yeah, it is.
And the spot is that we have three commuters for every employed resident.
Yeah.
And that has implications for families with little kids riding their bike.
Yeah.
And, uh, you say, decision-making around optimizing land use planning. So, how do you use land use planning to grapple with the...
With what we're talking about.
The issue we are confronting?
So, I'm working in Portable C at the District Office right now and I work with, um, a woman who commutes here from Albany, who has a 12-year-old son, a single mom. She commutes all the way here to, to work here. I work with another mom, working mom from Saratoga, who commutes in. I work with, um, a gentleman over there that commutes in from Fremont. It's, um, it's a really complicated issue. It, it's really about people, right? And, and figuring out, shuffling people around. Can you repeat the question?
Well, um, is part of land use planning...
Yeah.
Uh, you know, putting the cap on commercial growth.
Okay, the cap, so, or metering it, right? So, you want my personal opinion on, on that?
Yeah, because it fit in your land use planning.
Yeah. Well, I think Palo Alto is on the spot. It has an opportunity to be a leader, right? And, and, um, are we going to be inclusive? Are we going to be exclusive? I guess are questions that we have to grapple with. I'm on the Core Values Committee at Aloney Elementary School and, you know, we, I think as a person, I want to teach my kids to be inclusive, right? Do we have enough to go around? You know, can we do that responsibly? So, you know, and I'm aware that there's a lot of loaded topics in the city. I'm not super privy of them, but, um, capping or metering, um, is also a complicated issue. I, I think Palo Alto has the ability to absorb, you know, what's coming at us. I think we don't want to, um, limit ourselves. I don't think that's what it's done in the past. Um, we have the innovation to do it and I think we have the, um, the passion and the manpower, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Yeah, really nice to meet you guys and thank you so much for the opportunity. All right.
Anybody else want water?
Yes, that would be nice, thank you.
I meant a bubbly. It's almost done?
She meant a fancy one.
Couple more.
About half hour.
All right.
Liz, you're good?
I'll get some water.
Yeah, water is great.
Jessica, that's Reshma. Good question, though, but just wanted to make sure you knew. That was Jessica Reshma.
Yeah.
That's what you were looking at. Where is that? I see that. Good. We're going to give it just a minute until Karen gets back with some water, but, uh, in the meantime, just to tell you that we'll, we'll have about 10 minutes to talk.
Mm-hmm.
And at the beginning, uh, you're welcome to take a minute or so for...
I prefer that.
Give us some opening remarks.
Sure.
And if we have time at the end, we can do a wrap-up, but we probably won't.
Okay, no worries. Yeah. Hello.
So, uh, you're welcome to kick it off.
Sure, well, thank you first of all. I realize this has been a longish evening for you, although I do also realize you work till 1 o'clock sometimes, so it's maybe not that long. But anyway, um, my name is Reshma Singh and, um, I believe the PTC really needs somebody with a background, the attitude and the experience to continue the fine work they've been doing to make Palo Alto a better place. And I feel what I bring to the table is a passion to collaboratively grow Palo Alto into a really great city to live, to work and to play in. So, just to give you a background, I bring design thinking and I bring science and technology to the table. So, my background is in studying and teaching both architecture and landscape architecture. So, I feel comfortable, you know, viewing GIS maps at 1 to 10,000 scale or looking at architectural retrofit drawings at a quarter-inch scale. So, that's kind of my design thinking part of it. But because I've been practicing in building science for the past six or seven years, I do rely heavily on data-driven decision-making. So, I do look at statistics, I do look at science, I do look at innovation with a very positive lens and I do bring sustainability into the picture because that's kind of the professional background I have now. Also, a thing I did want to mention is that I've worked with public processes and I've kind of learned how to have the patience and persistence to kind of work through them. So, I do work with the federal government with both Department of Energy and Department of State. And with the town, I've had, um, experience back in my town in Massachusetts. I was a cultural commissioner there for two years. And since I moved to Palo Alto about seven years ago, um, in the, at the height of the Great Depression, I guess, um, I've seen this town develop and grow and in front of my eyes and unfold. And right now, my kids are at a point where they're both in school, they're settled and I feel like I have the energy and the passion to really serve the community. So, that's where I'm here.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I, I may have missed...
Heard what you said about what you did in Massachusetts. What was the...
So, there was a cultural commission, um, of Massachusetts. I basically spent...
County, are you saying?
Not the county. It is a town called Acton, Boxborough. Cultural Council.
Yeah, they have a different structures, which is why I'm asking. It's Acton?
Acton, Boxborough.
Uh-huh, right.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and you were...
The cultural, the commission head.
As part of the governing board in Acton or am I misunderstanding it?
It was not, uh, it was a nominated position and then we had elections to vote for the chair, so I was voted the chair of the commission. And so, we used to basically do two things. Number one was create events for cultural awareness and number two was we used to give out grants for, um, artists and cultural repertoires to come together and produce programs for the community.
So, I know Acton.
Yes.
And, uh, we are so different from Acton.
I tell you.
So, tell me, is, as you look at this and you know that what you're primarily doing is applying for a job as a planning and a transportation commissioner.
Right.
And, and you've been here seven years now.
Yeah.
And so, tell us your impressions because we're a, you know, a far cry from...
Yes.
A small New England town.
Yeah, so Acton prides itself in having a village character, whereas we, I guess, prides ourselves in having a city character with some town elements rolled in. But I feel that whatever it be in the phase or in the kind of mission of the town or the city, I think there's, um, certain lengths that you can bring to any development or growth. I know Palo Alto is among the top in the way the nation, cities is being shaped right now. I work at, at Berkeley Lab and we do a lot of work with Metro Energy and we work across 35 different cities and educational institutions. And what we find is that places like Chattanooga, Tennessee, they want to be a smart city, you know? Places like Columbus, Ohio, just got awarded $150 million grant by the federal government. And just yesterday, President Obama gave an $80 million infusion into the smart city movement. So, wherever you are in the spectrum, you can still make a change, you can still make a difference. But what I feel is really important is to bring a long-term strategic thinking to it. So, for example, a triple bottom line, which is what I personally believe in. So, the people, planet and profits perspective to every aspect, so everything that you review and recommend should be thought, thought of as both a short term and a long term. And particularly in terms of, you know, profits very, it's very easy because you want to see growth, you want to see economic viability for businesses to get attracted to our city. So, for example, I live at the intersection of Alma and Embarkadero, with the Embarkadero corridor coming up. I know that, um, there's a lot of passion and fire around that, uh, but I feel that if you strategically look at the way that intersection is designed, currently, there's a lot of thought towards the security and the safety, but there's no sense of place or entrance right now. So, when you think of the people and how they would perceive a space, again, going by the people, planet, profits, um, trichotomy, you know, how do you actually create a sense of neighborliness and space out there? How do you create a sense of entrance? It's a place of pause, it's a place where people actually do some economic activity. So, profits and people come in, but also the planet. For example, if there's idling cars at the intersection, right? How much emissions are they giving out? Do we have any data around that? Do we have data around how much urban heat island is being affected in that place? Do we have data around how much hardscape there is to treat cover? So, all of those aspects must be ruled into the way you actually review. Now, I know I'm preaching to the choir out here, but I feel that the different boards and different organizations in the city need to work together collaboratively to address a long-term strategic thinking around all growth and all innovation in the city.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll go to next, Tom.
I've asked everybody. So, what do you think Palo Alto should do about parking?
That's a great question. So, um, again, I'll, I'll put a triple bottom line, lens to it. So, any city must view parking with a sense of decreased emissions and a sense of decreased congestion. So, anything that we do in terms of looking at viability of projects that are coming in, whether it be a multi-story parking structure or a beret parking structure or whatever it is, uh, should be viewed with that, with that lens. So, um, you know, we can think about flexible parking spaces, for example, where you don't have a hard cover to, to the actual ground, you actually provide, um, you know, the, the paving with the open jointed structures, you can still get the permeation into the ground, so you can still get the water recharge happen. So, you can think of flexible temporary or multi-use spaces where it can be parking during events and other sports or, you know, a community gathering space during the times you don't need parking. So, I'm, I'm thinking that anything which is, can be used in different ways during different parts of the year or different parts of a month or different parts of a week would be much more beneficial than having single-use, um, single type of zoning for a particular place. That, that's kind of my high level answer. I haven't really thought about the actual land use and where might be good places, but that's kind of my inherent, just my gut reaction.
Corey?
So, as an advisory body to the City Council, uh, you know, there's actually been quite a discussion over the last couple of years of how we should, you know, how can it, you know, bridge some gaps between Council's desires, the PTC's desires, improve the working relationship between the two bodies? Um, I'd be curious to hear your thoughts about that in general and specifically, let's say there was something that came to the PTC, you offered your recommendation to the City Council and City Council, say, sends it back and says, you know, "We really think you got it wrong." How, how would you go about, um, the introspection, reflection and moving forward, even if you really thought that you got it right? How, how would you manage that kind of a potential conflict?
Um, so I think everything, um, has a baseline which nobody can negate with its data. So, the first of all, the first thing that I would do is really collect the data around it. How do you analyze the data with a lens which is, um, amenable to both the Council and the committee? How do you create knowledge out of it and how do you create the experience and wisdom around extrapolating decisions from that? And really working collaboratively with a lot of patience. I've been in a lot of situations where we need, we need to negotiate all the time. We negotiate every dollar that we get from the Department of Energy and it takes a lot of patience, a lot of follow-through, a lot of sweet talking, you know, whatever it takes. You know, you need to kind of be out there, go at it and just get it done, you know? So, I think we're all here with a common mission, common purpose. Nobody's doing it out of spite or out of, you know, their own personal motivation. And that's, that's what I think is also different about Acton and Palo Alto is kind of this this common desire for the town to succeed as a whole. So, I think, yes, it's easier said than done, but I think a lot of collaborative thinking and not just the Council and the, and the, and the commission, but also, um, things like the, the utility, um, the community development boards, the green building advisory council, I mean, all of these need to kind of work more coherently as a system.
So, um, I don't know how familiar you are with some of the debates that have been going on, on the rate of commercial and office growth, um, how much housing growth we should have and what type and, and what we would need to do in addressing transportation. So, can you share any thoughts you have at a high level on, on those big issues?
Sure. So, fortunately, where I'm placed is at a very neutral place, which is, um, the lab in Berkeley. And we have the benefit of being able to look across several different cities and towns and how they approach these problems. So, um, one thing I would say is when we talk about cities of the future with intergenerational living, high densities of, um, of, of living, of residences and also of commercial spaces, you know, one could go back and look at cities which have been very successful, whether it be cities in India where I come from, where you have multi-zoning, you know, upstairs you'll have the residential and downstairs you'll have the offices or, you know, the shops. Whether it's that or whether you look at completely a different, um, a different perspective which is streets of the future, you know? How do you actually create these dynamic, pulsating, vibrant environments where people live and work and play together? So, for example, if you're looking at electrification of the vehicles, right? And bringing that in and kind of seeing how the buildings and electric vehicles tie to each other. For example, could you have a whole parking bank whereby, um, the vehicle is acting as a mobile battery for the building? And when the tariffs are low, you charge the car and when the tariffs are high, you actually charge back the building. So, there's a lot of, you know, innovative thinking that can go around. I think Palo Alto is very well-positioned to kind of think outside the box and be able to roll out those kind of initiatives. But I think we should have one foot in the past and see traditionally what, which places have worked, especially in terms of, you know, what we feel is high density over population, healthcare requirement, food requirement that the city is seeing right now and also seeing where it's headed in the future. So, that's my high level again.
Yeah, what are your thoughts about, uh, these issues and debates we've been having about the rate of commercial growth and the rate, uh, that we should have of housing and how to address the, uh, our transportation challenges? That's, that's what I was asking.
I see, I see. So, I have to, I have to tell you, I've not looked very closely at what exactly debates. I've seen a couple of, um, debates, uh, which are put on, on, online, but I have still to look deeply into it and I'm, I'm hesitant to kind of express my opinion on something I don't know much about.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. We're all wrapped up.
Sure. Thank you very much. So, um, great. And, uh, I did bring a copy of my resume because I did not put that in my, um, so in case anybody wants to see it, I'll leave it here. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to go. Okay. Let me set this down, Mayor. Good evening. How are you? Good. Well, you're particularly popular because you're the second to last.
No, 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 no.
So, uh, our process is that we have about 10 minutes to talk and, uh, you're welcome to take the first minute or so to give introductory remarks if you would like to do that.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. So, first, Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, good evening. Just a little bit about myself. Um, I'm an engineer and I take an inclusive, evidence-based approach to problem-solving and, uh, to, based on, you know, shared goals and purpose and making the trade-offs necessary. So, I'm, I'm interested in PTC mainly because, you know, I've watched some, uh, videos and the issues, they're complex problems and tough problems that interest me and I think I can, uh, use my skills and contribute, uh, to coming up with solutions and give back to the community to guide the future growth and development. It is an honor to be among the 16 fellow residents, um, you know, selected for the, to be interviewed and I think everyone is qualified, so, um, so it's really an honor. And if selected to serve, it'll be my privilege to serve with the, the community with respect and dignity and with a commitment to work in an inclusive and transparent manner. And I'll also, um, carry out the duties and bring in... And I'll also carry out the duties and bring in, reach out to the communities, to the different segments of communities, and bring them into the process. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Cory?
In your response to question one, you talk about, you've lived here at Lincoln Park, you said since 99, right? You've lived in the city since 99?
Yes, yes. Sorry, I don't know what question one is.
Oh, but the question one was, you just asked, what is it about the PTC that's compatible with your experience and specific interests to you and why? You specifically say that you've watched the growth and changes around you in the last, you know, 27 years or so, or sorry, 17 years or so that you've lived here. And I'm just curious to hear your thoughts and your take on the growth and changes, the pros, the cons, the mixed, whether it's a mixed bag. How have you and your family, have you seen and reacted to that growth yourself?
Yeah, no, that's a very good question. I lived in Palo Alto, I worked in Palo Alto when I was at V M R. I worked at Sun, which is the new, it used to be in the Facebook campus. So I have commuted, you know, got stuck with Dumbarton traffic, you know, going on Willow Road and all this stuff. And my kids went to El Carmelo and JLS, and then to Paly. And, you know, and we, as parents, you know, even though I love to bike, and I, you know, I would prefer to bike everywhere, with all the soccer schedules and all the stuff, we ended up, you know, shuttling them, and we have to take a car. My wife was working in Stanford at the High Press, so she would come home and take them at the right time, the schedule-driven stuff. But with all the growth, we did see a lot of improvements too. You know, the safe routes to bike, you know, nowadays, the bike routes is really good, and I use it a lot. And even going to the schools, we don't have to worry about the Bryant intersection, everything. You know, now my son is in Paly, and he bikes, he also drives. Now they start driving, and I start biking more, so. So, yeah, so I think, you know, it is, it was managed, there are problems, but, you know, it's been, I enjoy my experience, and I would like to continue that going forward.
Great. Tom?
Can you talk a little bit about how you see the role of the PTC?
I think, you know, as everybody knows, the growth, the jobs to housing ratio, and the growth that's there, that is upon us, I think PTC has a very important role in evaluating the proposals that come in front of it, and seeing how we are using our land use appropriately, and making, you know, doing a thorough evaluation, and making the trade-offs to make any zoning changes, and using evidence-based, getting the stakeholders involved, and coming up with the trade-offs and recommendations so the city council can act on it. So I think it has a good role, or a very important role, to manage the growth in a balanced way, so that the neighborhoods, you know, are still friendly, and, you know, we keep the culture the way, you know, it is not just for current residents, but also for future residents. So it's not just yesterday, we have to look forward and see how things are happening. And so it has, so I think PTC has a very important role in looking at these zonings and changes that come before it, asking the right questions, getting the stakeholders involved, and looking at the data, asking the, working the city staff, and, you know, making the tough pros and cons analysis, and put it before city council.
Great.
You identify individual review as a particularly interesting issue. Can you talk a little bit about how you think about, you know, property rights versus compatibility, trade-offs?
Yeah, I mean, it came up in the recent PTC meeting, the individual review, and, yeah, it is interesting. The comment was, you know, individual review is pitting neighbors against neighbors, and, you know, why not the city take the action? So, yeah, it is a balance, you know? I think, you know, as a neighbor, I want my neighbor, I want to be friendly with my neighbor. So when I rebuilt, remodeled my house in 2007, you know, a neighbor filed, you know, wanted a question and all this stuff, I walked to the, you know, to the neighbor and talked to him, explained, and I think that's good in the long run. So, in terms of property rights, see, that's where, we have to balance it. It's not, I didn't feel that that was an encroachment on my property rights, it was more in education stuff. It is more, we need to kind of have that comfort level to approach each other, and, you know, when you're living in the neighborhood, because that's what is going to make it grow organic and allow us to change, you know, even the parameters of the neighborhood we live in without, you know, upsetting others. If it comes top-down, I think there is a danger of some division. That's my opinion, yeah.
Liz?
I'm not going to try your name, but...
Srinivasan.
Yeah, Srinivasan.
So, yes, well said. But I think you were interested in serving on the school board, am I correct?
Correct, yes.
And, but I can see that you've been very involved in a number of things, preparedness, PTA, and so forth. Just out of curiosity, more for schools or more for cities, or do you see them both as community service at a level where you'd like to serve?
I'm sorry, more for school, as in serving more for schools?
No, because you had said you were going to run for the school board.
Correct, yeah.
You're now here applying for planning and transportation. I'm trying to see the connection between the two.
Okay.
And I'm looking at your first answer, your involvement in the community, you've been very involved. So I'm looking for how you weighed one over the other.
Okay, understood. So I'm not running for the school board this time. I suspended my campaign, mainly because, you know, I think the campaign, as it started, I also met with other candidates, and I found synergy in there, so I wanted to spend my time more on understanding the mechanics and actually influencing the, you know, influencing at committee level or that level. So that's, so I think, you know, I'll be committed to planning and transportation commission. I don't see myself as, you know, I was at the school board meeting earlier today too, and I think one of the, one of the attractions that, when I moved to Palo Alto, is good schools. So I think, you know, for me, I'll be attached to both, and that's how we need to grow as a community. So it's not, yeah.
Eric?
A lot of excitement in this town about parking. How do you think the council and its committees should approach that?
Yeah, that's a good question. You know, my son parks by Paly too, and he gets into trouble for that as well. So I understand it. I think the, you know, the preferential parking, you know, that was piloted, I think there are more communities who want to do that. So we have to address parking, you know, in that way, but we should also try to address, or try to avoid having to park, meaning encourage other modes of transportation. You know, I would like to bike, even today, I would like to bike, you know, there's some safety issues, it's not, you know, we need bike stands, we should also have, you know, it should be locked, you know, we have to, you know, I'm shopping for my health reasons, I'm now looking at an electric bike which costs $2,400. So I want to be able to park it, you know, in a place, and actually go back and find my bike. So, so these are, I think, you know, it's going to go that way. It's actually the electric bikes, it used to be very heavy now, but with lithium ion batteries, actually much lighter too. And so, so, yeah, we have to address parking, you know, understand the data and address parking for those who will be parking, but we should also look at other ways to, you know, kind of alleviate the problem by encouraging other modes of transportation, public transportation, and understand the time, you know, the timing too, you know? Not everybody goes, travels around peak hours to park, you know? The restaurant workers are, you know, there are different times, so you really have to understand it and then find the balance there.
Are you very familiar with either the current comprehensive plan or the work that's being done on the new comprehensive plan?
Very familiar. To be honest with you, I can't say I'm very familiar, but, you know, I did go through some of the stuff for this land use and housing elements, and, you know, some of the programs that are being proposed in the 2015, 2020.
So are there any things about our current comp plan that you think should be changed for the next 15 years? Or any things that you are aware of about what's being proposed in the new comp plan that you either think are particularly important to do, or you don't agree with?
Good question. I think, yeah, the housing is a big issue, and we have to find ways to address it. Now, I think we are doing, you know, we are finding ways, we are encouraging, providing incentives, and, you know, doing the best effort, but, you know, recently, it is, my daughter, after graduating, she's got a job in PACCC, and she cannot afford to find a place here. So I do follow this, building the new units and affordable housing, and, you know, livable conditions, so that is good, we have to do that. But it's also, we have to look at the quality of living, you know, airplane noise and other So I'm more interested in, or I'm interested in housing, that's one big one, and then transportation as well, but more along some of the new things still, like technology and, you know, cyber safety, as well as, you know, transportation, if we have drones delivering, you know, are we going to have more and more, you know, people may stay inside, and I see a Safeway trucks more often, Safeway and UPS trucks more often than my neighbor's cars. So you have to look at it from those angles as well, you know, on the changing, you know, we're looking at from 2015 to 2030. So there are going to be different things, if, you know, what are the types of noises that are going to come? So environment, and, you know, we have to look at it in a holistic way. So I don't have specific things, but I'm monitoring it, and I go and give my comments, you know, because it's not really a solution. You have to put that in the plan and be on the lookout and be flexible.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks for your time.
You bet. Tom, you're convinced?
Oh, yeah. Question.
Tom, we're going to get enough bikes on the road that you have plenty of room to drive. That's our goal.
Are you guys ready?
We are.
Okay. Bringing up the rear.
Yeah. We're going to, celebration, last, last minute.
So, good evening, Mayor Burt and city council members. First of all, I do want to thank you for interviewing everybody. It's kind of a long effort this evening. And I want to introduce myself, but I feel kind of goofy, because I think you all know who I am. But I am Doria Suma, I live in College Terrace. We've lived there since 91, and we actually moved there because we were living downtown in a condo, and we wanted to buy a house, and we just couldn't afford one downtown, so we moved to the second-best place because it's walkable to Cal Ave and the train. And that was really the biggest thing, plus I liked the house. So I became involved in city stuff by, first by being involved with my neighborhood association, which I'm now president of, I think I've been on the board for six or seven years. And I was on both the traffic calming committee and the RPP committee. After that, I was on the Development Center Customer Advisory Group for about six years, which was very interesting. I was the one non-industry person, they wanted one resident at least to be on the group, so I stuck that out for six years. And I'm now on the comp plan, and I'm on four of the subcommittees. I'm on land use, natural environment, sustainability, and the housing delegation, which was just a temporary committee really to come to council one time. So we're still working on that. And I think, you know, that I go to council and the planning commission, and ARB and HRB frequently, so I often, I'm really committed to helping my city. I really love living here, I think it's interesting to do, and I've had an opportunity to work a lot with staff because of that too. So.
Who would like to go first? Liz?
So, you're on the planning and transportation, and what's the first big move you're going to make?
The first big move?
The first big move.
Well, I don't know, because I don't know what would be on the agenda, so the, you know, the first big move, the first big move would be to be committed to doing what I think the job of the PTC is, which is to vet projects and proposals for their consistency with the comprehensive plan and the other governing documents of the city. That's my first big move.
Is there one big nut that you're just dying to crack?
Um, I'm very interested in land use. The big problems that are before us right now are growth, density, and housing. I'm very, very interested in housing for the most vulnerable. I came to council and spoke frequently for Buena Vista, was very involved. I actually went to the supervisors, Board of Supervisors meeting and spoke. So I am interested in those kinds of things. I'm interested in a lot of the housing issues and the traffic. I'm not that obsessed with traffic as some people. I'm very interested in parking. Traffic to me is one of those, the people who I think have the worst time with traffic are people who have long, long commutes, and there are a lot of people that come to work here from far away, and they really, it's really hard on them. So I know that across-town traffic can be kind of annoying, but I don't find it to be the biggest problem, to be honest.
Great, thanks.
Tom?
You had an interesting thing in here about working with Jonathan Leit on code cleanup. I wonder if you could talk about that a little bit?
Um, yes. Jonathan emailed me when that was going to PTC and asked if I would comment on it, and it was the matrix, the first one. It was about 64 items, but many of them were literally typos or references that didn't take you to the right place. So those were kind of really just cleanups. And then there were some that were more important issues. One of them, so I reviewed it and submitted comments, I believe I spoke to, it was a while ago now, but one of them that was interesting to me was seismic TDRs, because I felt that the code was already clear, that you couldn't tear a building down. But I did think that maybe there should be, one of the suggestions I made was that there should be a time period after you got a TDR, a seismic TDR, historic TDR, where you would have to retain the building. I mean, that you wouldn't get the TDR and then be able to tear it down interesting right away. So that was one of my ideas. Another thing that came to the, another one of the interesting issues was rooftop gardens, which, and rooftop restaurants, actually, not gardens, which I think, there was one project on university, which I think is a lovely idea. I think we should be, I think it's a nice thing to use our rooftops, but I do think my recommendation there is that they should be parked, so it doesn't become another burden on nearby residential neighborhoods. And then another issue that came was a clarification for residential basements that they should not extend outside of the footprint of the building. And I thought that was a good recommendation as well. I think the whole basement issue is one that actually is going to have to be addressed. There's a lot of people that are concerned about dewatering. We've discussed this on the We've discussed this on the CAC, and I think we're making a recommendation that says this has to be looked into. There's best practices that can be considered, which are different construction methods, which are more expensive. And we decided we didn't know enough to make a recommendation that there's a way to sink these big metal plates in the ground. But we didn't know if you could do that on any size building and if that was an issue. So I think that a lot of people would like to look at the issues of basements from a lot of different angles. So I think that's another big one.
Eric?
So you mentioned, uh, housing for the most vulnerable.
Mm-hmm.
Right, among others, I suppose. Suppose for the sake of argument, there was no way that you could in practice build enough housing to make housing more affordable in Palo Alto. In such an environment, how should the council and its commissions approach formulating policy?
So you're talking about market rate housing?
Yeah, assume for the moment there's no ma, there's no, I mean, may or may not be true, but assume for the moment there's, there's no way to build enough market rate housing to bring down the price. How should the council and its commissions, including PTC, approach policy formulation in an environment like that?
Oh, that's, you know, that's a really tricky question. I think it's probably the case, I mean, I'm not an expert and I'm not a realtor, I'm not an economist, but it does seem really difficult to imagine a scenario where we can build enough housing to significantly bring the price down. So then you get into the issue of weighing the, the impact costs of housing. I think that we're seeing now that we got a little out of whack with too much office compared to housing and to correct that by just having potentially too much housing, which would affect, most importantly, I think, quality of the schools. You know, it's all stuff that has to be in balance. To me, the key to planning is a balance of uses and densities. Um, that being said, I'm not against there being, um, changes, if you guys approve it, to the, um, uh, zoning code that allows for a higher density, to allow for and encourage small buildings with, multifamily buildings with smaller units. I think unfortunately, um, in a market rate economy, that developers want to build the thing that they're going to make the most money on, so.
Just a follow-up before, if you don't.
Go ahead.
Um, do you think it is practical to have programs that would, uh, aggressive TDM programs for residential development that, um, would allow for less parking requirement?
I think it's a possibility. I haven't been, um, I haven't been really convinced by, um, other ci, evidence from other cities. And I'm really looking forward to, um, we'll have an example in Palo Alto soon because the Lower Mayfield project on El Camino between the two banks is below market rate and it's underparked, I think by 20%, it could be 25%. So we'll have a real-world example in Palo Alto.
Does it have an aggressive TDM program?
No, so that's a little bit different.
Yeah.
But, um, and I think, I actually am in favor of, um, I think it's a very interesting idea to let each development building or business to work out the TDM program that works best for them. Because I think different, um, in different locations, different, um, programs and a, a different blend of things will work better. So I think it's very important to remain flexible about those things. Is that 10 minutes? This was my, I thought I got 15 minutes of fame.
It, it runs the same way, I think it's your sense of time that changed. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much for staying late.
Now are we going to start the real agenda?
Is the beer delivered here already? Is the beer here already?
Is that what happens? Okay, thank you, you guys.
Thank you a lot, thanks.
All right.
Do you say the magic word?
What is the magic word?
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned?
Meeting adjourned.
All right.